Respond, Ms. Dor, Mr. Barlow, Mrs. Gibson.
Here.
Ms. Young, Mr. Young, Mrs. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here.
Dr. Sapini.
Here.
Mrs. Page.
Here.
And let the record reflect, Mrs. Cosby will not be here tonight, and we've been joined by our student Cory Stuckey.
Welcome Cory. Cory, would you be comfortable in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And a moment of silence, please.
Yes.
Over there, over there someone.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening Superintendent and Chairman. May I make the announcement about the interpreter?
Yes, please.
If anyone needs an interpreter this evening, I'll be happy to help. Thank you very much.
The next item, Madam Chair, is the adoption of the agenda. I have one item, and that is to remove legal from closed. I don't have any other changes.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Alright. We do not, so far as I'm able to know, have any recognitions this evening. But it's not time to recess our meeting and convene. It's supposed to be at 6:30. So... Well, we can. Since the public hearing on the renaming of this new middle school on Hall Street is not supposed to begin until 6:30, we will, at this time, have our public information on other matters. So if any of you would like to speak, the clerk will call the names of any individual who signed up in advance to speak. After that, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, sign in, state your name for the record. If you are speaking as an individual, you will have three minutes. If you are representing a group, you will have five. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board at this time?
Do you want me to call this person?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Colonel Oliver Norrell.
But now that's about the school, I think. Okay. Anyone else?
Let the record reflect, you've been joined by Mr. Barlow.
Okay. Here comes somebody.
Hello. I do want to speak about the new middle school.
Okay.
I have an event at 6:45, and I wonder if I might speak now?
Can we do that? No, is that no? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Butterworth. I first want to say thank you to all of you board members for your commitment and your service to our community. Speaking here in two roles. First, I'll talk about my issue as a parent. My sons attended Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts, which was a school that required uniforms, and I loved it. I loved that getting them ready for school in the morning was so easy. I loved that shopping for school was so easy. I loved the way that whenever they went anywhere on a field trip, everyone was easily identifiable, the groups could stay together, and they looked smart and pulled together and neat. But my favorite thing about the uniform model at Patrick Henry was the way that it built the community. The students looked like each other, and the community within the classroom was very strong. But even better was the way that the uniforms brought parents into the school by having uniform swaps. We had very highly attended Parent Teacher Association meetings. We had giveaway uniforms. We had small fundraisers with uniforms being passed down from one child to another, and it was fantastic. And now they're in middle school, and they wear whatever they want, and my mornings are more difficult. My shopping is more expensive, and I really miss the uniforms. Now, let me tell you about uniforms from a teacher's point of view. I'm a teacher here at Elkhart Thompson Middle School. I spend more than enough minutes every day talking to students about their clothing choices, about the things that they're wearing that are not appropriate for school, and I hope that at the new middle school, uniforms will be part of the school requirements. I think that it will do wonders for the mindset of the students as a professional place to be.
Time.
Thank you. And I do vote for River City Academy.
Thank you, and you can come back and talk about that later. We'll just go ahead with you being public and... Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I also had wanted to speak about the uniforms, but I couldn't wait.
Okay, but just tell us your name.
Chanel Graves.
Okay, thank you.
And I will make sure to write that down. But I am also a teacher here at Elkhart Thompson Middle School, and I've taught at a school, a middle school where uniforms were implemented. It was in a very diverse neighborhood, and I feel like it definitely brought the community together as well. It changed the mindset of the students. It was pretty hard to implement at first, but it was good as new and working, and I think that with the influences of the outside of the school, around the neighborhood, it did have a camaraderie with the students. And the eighth graders, they actually donated the uniforms at the end of their eighth grade year, which they were very happy to do. So we always had more than enough uniforms. So I have hopefully uniforms as well.
Thank you. Did you sign in?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, no ma'am, but I will.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if there's no one else who would like to speak, we will move ahead with our agenda. So number six, Dreams for RPS, 6.01.
Good evening all, and Happy New Year. First time seeing the board this year. I'm happy to come here tonight to talk about our progress against our Dreams for RPS project plans, particularly in Priority Five. Just to start us off... Just to get going, Action 5.1 calls for us to replace... Calls for us to modernize our systems and better integrate our systems. 5.1 calls for us to replace AS400. By now, I'm pretty sure that you've seen the picture of AS400, which is the green... The black screen with the green characters very much feels like a callback to the old Atari games. The good news here is that the RFP for this will hit tomorrow. We are a little bit behind here, but we still do plan to fully implement this... To start implementing the system this spring. Having been a consultant and done this work in the past where we implement large-scale enterprise systems, I do want to share that here, I really do think that slow and steady is the best course of action. There's just so many different considerations around workflow redesign, around general cross-functional project management, around change management, that make this a very difficult and challenging project. And I share that just to say that even though there's going to be some pain involved in this project, that we absolutely can pull this off. I just wanted to manage expectations and share that as we go forward in this project, and I share updates, they're not all going to be rosy. This is very much a two steps forward, one step back type of project. Moving down to Project Two, this is some good news. This project is underway, so over the summer, we broke our relationship with our old lottery system vendor, and we went to a vendor that offers a solution called Smart Choice. The lottery is open. It's got a lot of really great, cool parent features. It's got a much improved user interface over our last system, which provides for a much better user experience, which we're all very happy about. On the financial side, we are excited that this is also going to cost us less money after year one of implementation. So we were paying our old vendor about $40,000 per year. This new system costs about $20,000 per year, so there is some savings there. So we have a much better system at a fraction of the cost. Moving now to rezoning. I think we're all familiar with the work on rezoning that's been going on for the past few months with Cropper, with the school board, with the RAC. Now we are pivoting towards the work of figuring out the implementation. So we're updating our routes with the transportation department, updating our maps. I do want to share that there are capacity concerns here. One of our rock star routers has announced that he's retiring at the end of this year, so we're likely going to need to game plan around this and engage our vendor versus transfer support as we start to, you know, generate these new routes in a very short time period. Turning now to advocacy, yeah, Matthew Stanley's on board, doing an awesome job. He has produced, and the comm team has produced a number of collateral. They've updated our online presence. They've held family advocacy meetings, so we're right on track here as well. Moving on down to equitable funding, here we've done some very basic, high-level research. We've attended a training conducted by an organization that specializes in this work. Similar to the ERP, just in conversations with CFOs and other districts that have implemented student-based allocation formulas, this is very challenging work. Anytime you talk about changing the way that schools are funded in a zero-sum pie, you're talking about shifting funds from one school to another school, which can be very challenging conversations to have. That said, the board has already made a step in this direction through the implementation of the equity fund, so I think that we're moving along here as well. Turning now to transportation, this first one was easy. We purchased the 10 buses as soon as the money transferred over. The 10 buses are in, they've been fitted for RPS. We have five buses on the north side, five buses on the south side, so we're doing a great job there. Turning now to Project Two, we'd initially planned to use these 10 bus operator positions to staff and manage our VPI transportation. Unfortunately, we're facing the same challenge around recruitment of drivers that Chesterfield, Henrico, the entire state is facing. It's very difficult right now. And we did not open day one with enough drivers in order to support VPI, or even with the full allotment of our other drivers. So here, we have instead contracted with one of our vendors, First Student, to operate 10 of our buses to transport our VPI students. They're also feeling the pain and haven't been able to fully staff those 10 drivers as well, so we've had to open up and put VPI students on some of our other vendors as well, which has driven up costs. And, yeah, turning down to nutrition, we've held the taste test. I think that Ms. Roberson actually held a taste test with the Student Advisory Council some time ago. We've made menu adjustments. I'm sure by now you've heard about our work with Brigade. They're in three schools this year, moving to three schools next year, and we're in talks with them right now and trying to figure out a way to expand so we can hit more schools next year and cascade this throughout our division faster. Once the second transfer from the city comes through, we're also planning to purchase a lot of the kitchen equipment that Brigade has recommended that we purchase for our schools so that we can, again, start to prepare fresher meals for our kids. And moving over to the next slide, which is operations, this is the operations director position that we talked about. So our goal here is to have the principal focus on being the instructional leader of the school and have all of the issues around building maintenance, custodial issues, general data integrity fall underneath this Director of Operations position. This year is a research year. We haven't really moved a lot on this, but we do plan to take visits to districts that have currently implemented this model this spring. And the last slide should be the new construction. We've been holding JCT meetings every week. We've been holding schools, school construction progress meetings every week. The schools are on track. If you drive by, you can see the buildings start to come up out of the ground and see some really nice details. And if you walk through, you can see a lot of really great interior features also. Pipings going through, conduits, a lot of rough-ins, so we're progressing nicely on the schools. Are there any questions?
Dr. Sapini, and then Ms. Page, and then Ms. Gibson.
As far as the bus drivers and vendors?
Yes.
How many bus drivers do we have?
We have... Well, right now, we have 11 vacancies. It's 126 drivers active with 11 vacancies. That does not include the 10 positions I referenced earlier. And that fluctuates week to week. We've had as many as nearing 20 vacancies.
And so, as far... So you said we have to use vendors to kind of fill in, so what's the cost of the vendors?
Yeah. So the total cost for the VPI transportation to this point has been about $600,000.
For the year?
To this point, yes.
To this point?
Yes.
So you're estimating about how much altogether for the year?
We're still trying to figure that out. So I've been meeting with vendors, trying to get them to put their... To bring their costs down. I met with our most expensive vendor prior to the break. He's committed to reducing his projected cost by $220,000 for the year, and those conversations are ongoing with our vendors. So it's hard to project right now where we're going to land, but we are doing everything we can to talk to vendors to get the prices to come down.
So for the 600, what are we getting? How many?
How many kids are being transported?
How many kids, how many buses or what have vans, whatever that they're offering for that?
Yeah, so we have 10 of our buses in service. I'm not sure about how many vans or private cars we're using. I can get that to you, though. But it's about, it's over 450 kids, and we're still enrolling kids.
Ms. Page?
My question is regarding the electric buses, going back to the buses. So how does that... How do they impact the new fleet of buses?
Yeah, we had a call with Dominion about the electric bus program last week, actually. We were awarded four buses. We plan to receive those. So just to back up a little bit more than that, so Dominion's going to put 50 electric buses on streets in Virginia this year. They're going to split it up into two batches. 25 will be delivered in July, 25 in December. We're shooting for the July delivery of buses, so our four should be included in those four. They understand that most districts budgeted for this using FY21 funds. At the same time, they do need payment in order to get our order into the line. So what they're suggesting, what we've suggested that they do is that they go to districts and ask them to provide a letter of intent, and that should be as good as... And that will suffice and allow us to get our place in line.
So these buses will not be implemented until... Well, included in the fleet of new buses until July 1?
And that was the plan. So we have 10 buses for this year and 10 buses for next year. So 10 of those new buses for next year will be electric buses.
So are we aware of the cost savings?
No, we're not. Four buses isn't going to generate a huge amount of cost savings. It is going to save us on diesel fuel, but as we scale up, we'll start to see a more significant cost savings to the district.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've got a number of questions, so I'll just ask them all so that I don't go back and forth. So following up on the bus discussion, I think it would be helpful to see more details in terms of... About the program. There's a lot of public sentiment where there's skepticism with Dominion, and so I think it's important to really ensure that the public is aware of the program, of whatever the incentive might be for Dominion to provide it, and, you know, and to get more detail. So I think we should be encouraged to do that.
Agreed. Dominion has shared that they're happy to come to the board to provide that information, so we'll set that up.
And so I also want to, you know, close the loop in terms of VPI transportation because this is a really big deal. So essentially, we budgeted in last year's budget $500,000 for VPI transportation, and then... And so then this year, we are now at $600,000 for VPI transportation. And if, you know, we're about halfway through the year, we could then exceed the budget, you know, which was originally established for 500,000, cost could be at $1.2 million if the cost remain as planned. And so I just want to make sure that we recognize that. That's a huge discrepancy to have. And, I mean, you know, essentially, we're kind of... We're thankful that we weren't able to hire enough bus drivers that we budgeted for to allow us to do this, but, you know, that's a big deal. The other question that I have is regarding the HR system. I want to be clear, if we... Have we already procured the new HR and budgeting system? What is the cost, and who is the vendor? And then the last question, there's been a couple of line items where there's travel, so I would just like to get more detail in terms of, you know, for this equity fund, for instance, for the school operations travel, where folks are going to be traveling to, and how that's being determined, and if we're still at the budget for those line items, too.
Yeah. Starting with the VPI question, all in, we budgeted $800,000 for that, including the 10 bus driver positions. As I shared, we did plan to use those 10 bus drivers exclusively for VPI to make this happen this year. So I think that our starting point was $800,000. I also just want to note that RPS had never done this in the past, and it's not because it wasn't the right thing to do. In fact, it was a requirement, but it wasn't done because it's hard and because there was a price tag attached to it. When we realized that we needed to provide this transportation, that we didn't have enough drivers, we went to First Student, came up with a plan that would have brought us in at $800,000, right at that mark, and provided rides for these kids. Unfortunately, they have the same challenges that we do. They can't staff their drivers. We've had to go to other vendors and have to engage them in order to get our kids to school. There are options here. We could have thrown more kids on our routes, but that would have resulted in four-year-olds being on a bus for an hour and a half, so we couldn't do that. So that's been the primary driver of these costs.
Okay. I see I have three more people to speak, but we're also about time that we have to do our public hearing. So when we come back, Mr. Simmons, will you be prepared to continue? We have Ms. Burke, Dr. Sapini, and Ms. Page who would like to have further questions, okay? But at this time, I will recess, and we will convene a public hearing to receive names for the new middle school on Hall Street. Persons who wish to suggest names, please come forward, sign in, state your name for the record, and you will have two minutes to speak. But if you need longer, we can probably make that happen.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect, you've been joined by Ms. Dor.
to the School Board 2020. Good to see you, Mr. Camaras and all those that assemble. I apologize for not being here earlier during public comment, but we were busy talking about Richmond Public Schools and how wonderful it would be to reconvene the...
Mr. Willis, this is being live streamed, so it's even more important for you to please state your name.
Okay, yes. My name is Charles Willis, and I live in 8th District. And as I was saying, my comments here is pertaining to the naming of the school, but we were just talking about how excited a couple of community leaders and state delegates about how wonderful it would be to see Richmond Public Schools go back to Martin Luther King Celebration. And one of the reasons why I brought it up was because we were very excited about renaming one of our middle schools here in Richmond, Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. The same as I've come to you today to represent one that would bring a name of significance. I mentioned it earlier. I've talked with some other folks throughout the community, and I even talked with some folks within the school system. And today, I think that for those I've talked with in the community, that the consensus are that we believe that a wonderful name, an exciting name, Southside...
Thirty seconds.
Southside Academy, or River City Academy. And that's something that we think would be wonderful, that would be enjoyable, and something that would represent Richmond as a whole, especially the Southside of Richmond. In conclusion, also, we would like the board to consider that there are some areas that we'd like to name within the school that would bring some recognition to those that have done some significant things in the community as well. So looking at maybe naming the gymnasium out to someone, as well as the library.
Time.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here once again to advocate for my...
Please start with your name.
Loret Turner.
Thank you.
I apologize, excuse me. I'm here once again to advocate for the school to be named Samuel Gravely Junior Middle School. And I have some excerpts from his obituary that I would like to read. "The Department of the Navy announces the death of retired Admiral Samuel L. Gravely Junior." Chief of Naval Operations Admiral Van Clark said Admiral Sam Gravely excelled in his life of service to the nation commanding warships at sea during the Vietnam War and rising to lead the entire Third Fleet. His leadership inspired a generation of Americans to make the most of every opportunity. All in our Navy, we are grateful for his service. After graduating from Virginia Union, he also received an honorary doctorate degree from Morehouse College and also University of Richmond, and he also has a school in Haymarket, Virginia, which is about number 10 in the nation of elementary schools, and a ship, the USS DDG Gravely.
Thirty seconds.
Excuse me, oh, excuse me, okay. And also, I just want to show you a picture where he was assigned by presidents to... This is Bush I and Barbara Bush, and his... Him and his wife, and he was assigned by presidents to also recruit the military for people of color.
I'm here once again to advocate-
Please start with your name.
Lorette Turner.
Thank you.
I apologize, excuse me. I'm here once again to advocate for the school to be named Samuel Gravely Junior Middle School. And I have some excerpts from his obituary that I would like to read. "The Department of the Navy announces the death of retired Admiral Samuel L. Gravely Junior." Chief of Naval Operations Admiral Van Clark said Admiral Sam Gravely excelled in his life of service to the nation commanding warships at sea during the Vietnam War and rising to lead the entire Third Fleet. His leadership inspired a generation of Americans to make the most of every opportunity. All in our Navy, we are grateful for his service. After graduating from Virginia Union, he also received an honorary doctorate degree from Morehouse College and also University of Richmond, and he also has a school in Haymarket, Virginia, which is about number 10 in the nation of elementary schools, and a ship, the USS DDG Gravely.
Thirty seconds.
Excuse me, oh, excuse me, okay. And also, I just want to show you a picture where he was assigned by presidents to, this is Bush I and Barbara Bush, and his, him and his wife, and he was assigned by presidents to also recruit the military for people of color as well, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Leila Rajab Bland. I currently am a middle school teacher here at Elkhart Thompson Middle School, and today I bring to the board a few recommendations from our students. In class today, I had them do opinion statements, and they provided some evidence as to why they believe the school should be named various names. So, I'll start off by reading one of the, a few of them, okay? In my opinion, this is, these are students, from students, "In my opinion, the new school should be called Reed Middle School. I believe this because its elementary school is right there, and it should be named as that." Another student has written, "The school board is planning on renaming the new school, and I, in my opinion, I believe the school should be named Murphy Middle School. It would be nice if it was named after the principal." I'm going to go to this one. This one was really good, I know I'm running out of time, but I do have a student, "In my opinion, I think the new school should continue to be called Elkhart Thompson. Just because the school building is being destroyed doesn't mean everything is. The school that's being built is being built on Elkhart Lane and Road as well, so it could make sense to keep it the original name. Changing the name would also be a little disrespectful to the people who created and built this school as well, because the change would be getting rid of their work and dedication." The students took to the assignment very well. I do agree with changing the school's name. As a graduate of Elkhart Middle School in the 90s, we are moving on into new things, and I know that the students really want to keep the name as Elkhart or Elkhart Thompson. As a team, I know that we've been talking about River City Academy, and what that would set a tone into the communities and into our neighborhood, but I did want to share out exactly what the students and the voices of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the name for the new middle school on Hull Street?
They're being shy today. Good evening, how are you all doing today? Everyone's being shy, but we had some more student names we wanted to share, and some other staff members are here, they're all hiding out in the audience.
Ms. Murphy, we all know you, but-
But I need to say my name, and I need to sign in. Jacqueline Murphy, Principal, Elkhart Thompson Middle School. All right. So, some of our students, quite a few, are on the Murphy Middle School thing. Quite a few are still on keeping it Elkhart Thompson Middle School. I think we have been so into our school spirit, quite a few students want to name it Viking Middle School. And quite a few, Elkhart, Elkhart, they are in love with Elkhart. Herman L. Carter Middle School. Herman L. Carter was one of the first black principals in RPS in the 60s, principled over John Marshall and Kennedy, so that was submitted. South Richmond Middle, from one of our parents. RBA Academy, from Aria Edwards. Some more Murphy Middle, the Murphy School. Then we get to Phoenix Middle School, because the phoenix means courageous and helpful. Some more Elkhart, and quite a few students feel like the next school should be named after them, but most of those were Elkhart Thompson. So, they say they've always wanted to have a school or something named after them, so. And the last one I have is Finnick O'Dare Middle School, and they didn't tell their reason why. And the rest of everyone standing here, we've been talking about River City Academy. Y'all have your River City Academy signs. Just the idea of, from the committee and everyone thinking of being an all-inclusive, trying to stay away from a person's name, because one person's name is going to exclude someone, and that's one thing that the committee has continued to talk about, and we wanted to go with the psychology of an academy and just changing the mindsets of staff, students, and our community. Anybody else with the- Okay. Thank y'all for your support. Thank you all for-
So, this is the recommendation of the school team that was working on all this stuff on this new school?
No, no, this is just some staff members at Elkhart Thompson idea. The team has not submitted, we won't submit until next week.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the name for the school? Here comes one.
Good afternoon, School Board members, and Happy New Year. I'm not going to be before you long, because I was here before. Yes, Ms. Owens, Joette Barley. I won't be before you long. So, I would just like to reiterate the two names that I gave before. I would like to scratch, one of the names that I've given was Thomas Cannon Senior. His son stated that in his father's will and wishes, he just wants you all to remember him. He don't want a school, a street, a block, a stone in his memory. He just want to be remembered for the philanthropist that he was. I would also like to, again, state Walter T. Kenny Senior, former U.S. Postal Service worker, former city council member, former APWU Union Representative, and my handsome, six-foot-tall cousin, Walter Kenny. I'm sure some of you know of him, he passed January the 28th of last year, so I would like to see if the school would be named after Walter. And another name that I recommended was Gracie Harris, who was the professor at VCU and was not allowed to attend VCU because of the color of her skin many years ago, so she went to Hampton University instead. Did not let the denial of entry stop her. She went back to VCU, gained her master's degree, later on became the provost, and has Gracie Harris Institute Leadership Program for Women in her honor at the school now. So, I would like to be considered for those two names, and I thank you very much for hearing me this evening.
Thank you. Okay. No one else? Well, we are scheduled until- Before we go back, this is one of those confusing evenings. Before we go back to our discussion with Mr. Simmons, the gentleman who had signed up to speak at Public Information has now joined us. So, Colonel Norrell, if you would like to come and speak at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, all. I'm Colonel Oliver Norrell, the Director of Army Instruction for Richmond Public Schools, and I come before you today to request equitable compensation for you junior ROTC instructors. You may recall, I was before you previously in December, but however, my presentation was cut short because of the two-minute time length, so I'm coming back to finish up what I started back then. The motto of the JROTC program is to motivate young citizens, excuse me, motivate young people to be better citizens. We do this through classroom instruction, service projects, setting the example for our cadets, and providing after-school activities. Currently, the RPS JROTC program has approximately 800 cadets in the five high schools that we serve, with a total of 14 instructors. All of the instructors have served a minimum of 20 years in the military, and five have advanced degrees. The U.S. Army Cadet Command sets the instructor's minimum pay. When taking into consideration the Army's contribution, RPS's minimum instructor pay for 14 instructor salaries, the mean average is $2,907 a month per instructor. This means you're getting an experienced classroom instructor for an average of less than $3,000 per month, while the salary of a first-year teacher with no experience is $4,639 a month. As you know, junior ROTC programs encompass activities such as drill teams, honor guards, rifle teams, color guards, raider teams. In order to be competitive at the meets and to conduct ceremonies in a manner that reflect positively on the program and on RPS, these teams must practice after school. Additionally, all JROTC programs are required to field a team to compete in an academic bowl, which is on a national basis. This training involves after-school classroom instruction as well. As instructors, we must always be present during these rehearsals and practices. In addition to other school activities, your JROTC cadet teams compete and perform on weekends. For example, the Richmond Junior ROTC program sponsored a raider meet in November at the Pocahontas State Park. The cadets and instructors arrived around 6:30 in the morning, and the event ended around 3:30 that evening. Over 30 schools attended with 50 teams, with over 400 cadets participating. Your instructors put in many hours after school in coaching and preparing their teams for this competition, and in planning and operating this event. We're also hosting a drill meet in February at the Arthur Ash Center, a military ball at Fort Lee in March, and a drill and sports event in April. Our color guard performances are in such great demand throughout the Richmond area, especially by entities outside of RPS, that they perform on weekdays as well as on weekends and holidays. Again, we're shining a light on RPS. I provide the foregoing as background and urge that you budget additional compensation for your JROTC instructors per RPS policy 7-7.1 employee compensation, which authorizes extra pay for the supervision of activities which are, and I quote, "of such a nature that although the school program includes these activities, they cannot feasibly be included in the regular school day," end quote. Cadet Command policy, by which the district has agreed to abide, also provides that JROTC instructors will not be expected to perform unpaid additional duties beyond those performed by teachers. When other teachers conduct programs that involve school activities, they are compensated by RPS. Athletic directors and coaches, club sponsors, formal after-school instruction by teachers, all are compensated for their time spent after school. JROTC instructors should likewise be compensated.
Thirty seconds.
I have been informed that at one time, RPS provided compensatory time for JROTC instructors, but stopped doing this several years ago. At a minimum, it is requested that this practice be reinstated. In JROTC, you have a program with dedicated professionals who bring a great value to RPS at minimal cost. It is only fair that they be treated equitably. Other school districts in the area have policies that allow for additional compensation for JROTC instructors-
Time.
-and we ask the same. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. I saw that a couple of other people came in, were, was any of you, were any of you who came in looking to speak about the new school name? If so, please come forward at this time, sign in.
Good evening, my name is Charlene McQueen. I am an employee of Richmond Public Schools. I work here at Elkhart Thompson Middle School, and the name that I would like to recommend is Dr. Howard Hopkins, who has been a principal in Richmond Public Schools for many, many years. He started as a physical education teacher in Maggie Walker High School. He's been in Richmond Public Schools for over 50 years. He loves our children, and he's a dedicated worker, so I would like to recommend the name of Dr. Howard H. Hopkins.
Thank you. Last call, if there's anyone else who would like to speak about the name for the new middle school, please come forward at this time and sign in. Seeing none, I adjourn the public hearing. We reconvene the School Board meeting. Mr. Simmons, and our next speaker, I mean, our next School Board member with questions or comments, is Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. I have two questions. First one is regarding the transportation piece. As you stated in your, during your report, that across the state of Virginia, really it's across the country, school bus drivers, it sounds like we have ample school buses, but now not enough drivers.
Right.
So, are there any other means of, rather than knowing that it is not working at this particular time, and the vendor expense is really, we don't have any other choice but to provide for our children, but it's a lot? Are there any other means, a partnership with GRTC, or is there anything else that we can do in regards to trying to provide transportation for our students, but at a different, a different avenue of having them to participate, especially the high school students?
Yeah, yep. Yes, you're right. Driver, the driver shortage is an issue across the nation, and it sort of come evolved into an arms race, where everybody's raising salaries and trying to find this innovative ways to attract and retain drivers. For example, tonight, you'll see that we're proposing first a raise for bus operators, but also an attendance bonus for bus operators. That's also a pressure point for us. And also the addition of an operations recruiter to specialize and focus in on recruiting bus drivers, so that we can have somebody dedicated to that, that purpose. We haven't engaged GRTC about VPI transportation in particular, just because they're, these are young kids, but for the high schoolers, we already have the program for them currently, but it's not really taking away from the number of kids that ride our buses.
Exactly. And my other question is, but I do hope, what I'm suggesting is, especially for high school students, if not for this coming school year, but at some point, the likelihood of getting bus drivers right now is very slim across the board. I don't know of any place in the country that has ample school bus drivers, especially locations as large as ours or larger, so. My other question is regarding the school operations piece, it's not in front of me now, but with the assistant principals or directors, would that be, does that per school or someone at the administration level, or?
Yeah, so I think that the ultimate goal is to have this down at the school level. This would be a school-based position. I do think that we're a ways away from being there yet, and we're proposing a pilot, once we get to the pilot phase. But for this year, there's really no dollars in the strat plan for this, so it's really just a research year. So, how are other districts doing this? What are the best practices? Let's put together a plan to get us to the other side of this.
I do know that Tidewater area years ago did have that in place, where an assistant principal or director of operations. I just hope that it stays at the school-based level.
Yes.
Not years, well, at one time, we did have it at central administration piece, and it's a lot, but if it's at the school-based level, if the heat goes out or the water turns cold, you can respond to it quicker. And, but it is great to have the opportunity for the principal, the lead person, to be free in order to address the curriculum pieces, so I think that's great, and I hope, I look forward to hearing more about that, especially being right there in-house. Thank you.
Dr. Sapini?
Still with the buses. When it comes to maintenance of our buses, is that done in-house?
Yes, we have a transportation garage. They do incredible work. They're doing transmissions, transmissions, they're pulling pieces out of old buses, putting them into new buses. They don't do bodywork, so that is sent someplace else, but we do the majority of our work in-house. in-house.
Are they familiar with electrical buses?
I'm sorry?
Are they familiar with electrical buses?
They are not, so we need to figure that, that piece out.
Yeah.
To Mr. Simmons, thank you for this information, my question back on transportation. So regarding, regarding the electrical buses, and I think Ms. Gibson maybe kind of touched on a little bit, cost savings, I think that would be very helpful, helpful to the board, cost savings and with the electrical buses and, you know, what other budgetary implications maybe in, in place of that, if the board can get an update, information regarding that.
Yes, we can work on that. I don't think it's going to be significant just because we're talking about four buses out of a fleet of more than two hundred. So it's not going to be a huge cost savings, but we can figure out what that might generate look like.
Okay, and also, my other question regarding transportation. Yes, transportation, bus drivers, Richmond is not unique to this issue. We all know that this is a city, you know, local issue, state issue, and a national issue, but I guess my question is, have we talked to surrounding localities to see, and this was a rhetorical question, but to tackle, how they tackle this issue?
Yeah, we have talked to surrounding localities. In fact, all of the, the transportation directors in the state of Virginia have actually mobilized and they've issued a letter to the General Assembly just highlighting the issue around driver recruitment, driver retention, and asking them to get involved in ways to try to figure this out. But right now, we're all pretty much doing the same things. We're offering raises, we're offering attendance bonuses, paying for CDLs, so it's the, the same lovers.
Have we even, this is my last question, surveyed the bus drivers to see, you know, was it a challenge, what they, um?
We have, we have not. In terms of our turnover, I think it's really just salary, being competitive with all of the, the big moving companies, the big transportation companies. Folks go to Walmart, they go to our, the big distributors. So they come here, they get trained, they get their CDL, and then they, they move on. So it's really a, I don't know, there's a lot of different things at play here.
Seriously, my last question.
Ms. Page.
GRTC, because we had this, been at the table with them before, and yes, we have an incentive for our students driving, me riding the GRTC, but they really didn't add any additional routes. So it really did not help us as far as getting our students to and from school.
Especially on the south side, yeah.
Exactly. I mean, that's one of the major issues with us. Are we, you know, are we going back to the table with them to discuss?
Yeah, I think that, I think I'm hearing, that's one of my homework assignments for tonight, is to go back to the table to GRTC and see what we can, can do. So we'll, we'll do that.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm very pleased to hear the conversation relevant to GRTC. Now, everybody here will recall that introduced a proposal for us to collaborate with GRTC for the purpose of transporting all of our high school students to and from school. But I want to make the point this evening that should be rather obvious to everybody in the room and/or listening, and specifically, the VPI costs are just not sustainable. I mean, I hope we all can acknowledge that. One point two million dollars for four hundred and fifty students is just not sustainable. So I did the math, back-of-the-napkin math, granted, but, and correct me if I'm way off, I don't think I'm way, way off, but on balance, to transport our K-12 students, we're spending about two dollars a day, and on balance, we're, we're spending about fourteen dollars a day for our VPI students. To put it in perspective, it's not sustainable. We're going to have to do something, we're going to have to do something fast. So I would invite, and I'm very pleased that we are having some conversation relevant to scaling up our partnership with GRTC, I think that's but one of it, but to spend fourteen dollars per day per student when we're spending two dollars for K-12, two dollars per day for our K-12 students is just not sustainable.
I, I think a, a big piece of the equation is that we need to go back out for bid for our, our vendors. I think that if we do that, and we do plan to do that this spring, and we're able to bring in some more, some more first students, the vendors with the lower, lower price point, we'll be able to get these, the, the price more manageable. But what's really hurting our budget is the fact that first student like us is tapped out and they can't hire additional drivers, or having to put those students with additional vendors that don't have as good of a price point as, as that organization.
All right, Ms. Dorr, then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Gibson.
Just two, two thoughts. One, in regards to bus drivers, I have read that other, there are two issue, no, I'm not saying anything that you don't know, but one issue with bus drivers is the fact that it's a part-time job, and so I know other districts across the country will find a role, find a way to utilize a human, a bus driver for driving the bus route, and then find a job for them to fill the hours of the day, to make it a full-time job with benefits. So that could be one thing that we consider. And the second barrier that I understand is the stringency of the background check, and I don't, I know that might open a can of worms, but I do think it's, might be worth looking into. Are we automatically just excluding a ton, and I, I don't know if that's at the city side, but are we automatically excluding a ton of candidates based on, you know, a speeding charge from twenty years ago and, and we're reducing our applicant pool in that way? And then in regards to, so I think there's some creative things that we may be able to do to address some of the barriers. I love the idea of surveying bus drivers to figure out what are the actual barriers. And then in regards to the electric buses, super excited, and I concur with Ms. Page about getting, or, and I think Ms., I wasn't here, but Ms. Gibson, about getting the cost savings. And I would love to see us continue to leverage state, I know there's a lot of state money around electric school buses right now, so continue to leverage state opportunities. And I personally would love to see us have some kind of long-term goal to go electric over time, so just my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for, for this presentation, Mr. Simmons. I, I'd like some more context about the relationship with Brigade at this point. I know that there's, or I see that there's a recommendation to no longer rent centralized kitchens and work with a meal delivery service, so I'm curious to know how, how extensive you view a relationship with Brigade to, to be in the future, how you see it evolving, just like more feedback there.
Yeah, so long-term, we do want to cascade scratch cooking throughout the division. When we looked at trying to rent, trying to rent centralized kitchen space and work the logistics between transporting those meals to different schools, the logistics were just very difficult and we probably would have overshot that, that budget. So we decided to instead pivot and work on building up our own infrastructure, so buying our own kitchen equipment, our own walk-in freezers. And with that, I think one of the, one of the big, great offerings that Brigade offers that's not talked about a lot is that they, they also specialize in kitchen operations. So they've also visited our schools, they've looked at our workflow in the kitchens, they made recommendations for how to improve things, like add a serving line here, maybe do prep here, move this over here, move this piece of equipment over here. They made recommendations on what pieces of equipment that we need in order to cascade the scratch cooking throughout the division. So they really have provided us with a playbook on how to get there in a few years, and that's the direction that we are, are looking to, to go.
And just to follow up, can you, is there any way you can send us the, the contract or statement of work or whatever document we have so we have a better idea of what services we're providing?
Yep, all of our contracts are online. I'll send you the link.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, and then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to, I wanted to make a couple notes regarding VPI. So, you know, it, it, it was my understanding that the additional ten drivers was not for VPI. There was a lot of discussion both in the, your prior budget and in, and last year's budget about the need to hire more drivers to address the inequities in terms of a lot of the stops. And so I recall some of my colleagues actually walked to see how long it would take to get to some of the south side hub stations. And so my hope, and, and I, and I believe that's, that's how it appeared in, in the budget, was that the additional ten drivers was, was budgeted to help alleviate some of those long distances, early bus times, et cetera. So, so, so I, 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 if there was a change that was made to put the funding towards VPI, I think that might have happened later. But I, if I recall, another piece to the VPI component, and this also speaks to what my colleague, Mr. Young, brought up in terms of the discrepancy in cost, to be clear, the, the model that we are using for VPI students, which is required by the Virginia State program requirements, is that it goes from house, from the home setting to the, to the school. And so because, you know, it's not designed, it's, it's not intended to be an efficient program because it is picking up students from their home, that is going to drive up the cost of the, the, the VPI, of, of VPI transportation. And so, and, and I think, you know, I would certainly support looking at leveraging GRTC for, for high school students, but to be clear, there's really no way we'd be able to do that for our VPI students. As a mom, I can tell you, I wouldn't put my four-year-old on a, on a public bus. And so, so moving on, I did want to follow up on the other question that I, I don't think you had the opportunity to answer, Mr. Simmons, which was regarding the HR system, whether it had been procured, what the cost was, the, the vendor for that.
Yeah, I did miss that one, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
The system has not been procured, as I shared in the beginning, the RFP goes out tomorrow.
Thank you.
And regarding the, the travel, you had a question about the travel as well. The travel is a part of our second request from council, so we haven't received those funds yet and we haven't traveled anywhere.
Mrs. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to hear from our student representative, Mr. Cory Stuckey, in regards to the GRTC transportation, rather than Richmond Public Schools, providing transportation for our students at the high school level.
Yeah, I was just about to, I was just about to ask if I could ask a question about that.
Is this mic on?
Yeah, it is. Okay, um, so most of my friends, me personally, I don't use the GRTC buses because I, they're really not close to my house, and it's like really a waste of time for me to walk to that bus stop and wait there, knowing that the buses take a long time rather than wait for my own school bus. That's why it was so crucial for me and my mom, and we ended up working to give me my own transportation, like car-wise, because it's kind of hard to rely on either of the buses. Sometimes my school bus would come late, and sometimes I would wait out there for hours and never a bus comes, sometimes I missed school. So my mom was like, it's crucial to get my own transportation because I'm not going to say either, no, neither one of them are really reliable, but it scares me sometimes of which one to actually choose. But most of my friends use the GRTC buses and they're still coming to school late and it's like still running up their attendance, and everybody's going to the tennis office saying that it's not me, it's the bus, it's the way the buses run. Sometimes it takes a little pit stop, like breaks in between the, um, the stops and everything. So me personally, I feel like that the school buses, like, most likely are better for the kids, but they're not really in adequate, equitable spots for the students to actually get to them, to actually get to school. Like, most students really have to walk like ten blocks, like one of my neighbors, since the bus stop, our, our bus stop has a lot of kids, like we had sent two buses to our bus stops because that's how many kids get on that one spot. He walks down about ten blocks down to the other bus stop for the other bus, just to get on that bus at an earlier time, because he had needs to get to school, he didn't know where for the second, the second bus. So I feel like, yeah, like I was hearing everybody talk about, like, we need more bus drivers. I feel like that really is a crucial thing because not only do we need more bus drivers, we need more stops, stops for the kids to get on because it's really unfair that kids have to be piled up through to the seat or have to stand up in the aisles, which is unsafe for the kids to do. And, yeah, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey.
No problem.
Thank you. Ms. Page.
Another question, and Cory just spoke on it. And this is something that the board, we really need to decide what's going to be our priority. Because trans, transportation is one of our biggest expenditure. Wouldn't you say that, Mr. Simmons?
With facilities, yes.
Yes, and this has been a, an ongoing issue for decades. Back in the early two thousand, we eliminated all citywide transportation, which impacted open enrollment. So this is, this is not going to go anywhere until this board, until we decide this is, we want to tackle this. Because in the south side, we need to add more stops for the hub transportation. And I know I'm probably jumping ahead because this is our budget discussion, but we got to face it, we got to tackle this issue because when we talk about equity, equity, that's a, a problem in the south side because of the lack of, the lack of means, you know, the lack of means for transportation to go to the specialty schools, because I live ten blocks away and it takes me an hour to get to the hub stop. We got to, you know, we got to face the music because we're never going to, we're not going to really address the equity issue if we don't address transportation. And yes, you said facilities, but transportation is a huge barrier.
Thank you. Mr. Stuckey wanted to add something else.
Um, yeah, I just forgot to say earlier, um, I really liked the idea that, that she brought up earlier about like adding more, like incentives to the bus drivers and maybe like giving them more of a full-time job. Because speaking to one of my bus drivers that like, she, um, works in the school too now, and she walks around and just tries to find something else to do during the daytime because she says that, she says that just driving the bus is not really paying her bills enough, so she needs something like more of a full-time job. And that's why she ended up quitting, um, driving buses, but she still stays around the school and speaks to us, and she's like that, she missed driving the bus because she missed the kids, but it's not really helping her out like financially-wise. So I really liked the idea that you brought up earlier, that giving them more of a full-time job with higher pay and maybe more incentives is a better idea to get more bus drivers to actually want to stay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Six point oh-two, receive an update on dreams for RPS Goal Three and Goal Seven.
Kamras. I am presenting this evening an update on our Goal Three academics. And if you can scroll up, please, the first slide. Our Goal Three for our Dreams for RPS strategic plan focuses on paying attention to the academic proficiency for all of our students, and in particular for English, Math, and Science. When we look at Goal Three and how we are assessing progress on this measure, we are using three grade-level specific assessments to measure academic progress. For the lower grades in K-2, we measure student reading levels using the PALS assessment. For grades three through eight, we will track the standards of learning proficiency rates across all five subject areas. And for grades nine through twelve, we will monitor performance on both the SOL and of course assessments for those, those courses that, where there are exams provided. And we'll also track the percentage of our high school students who are considered college and career-ready according to benchmarks set by the College Board, according to PSAT performance. Tonight's presentation focuses only on the third measure, which is college and career readiness, according to the according to the fall 2019 PSAT results for 10th and 11th graders. Just as a recap, when we look at our college and career readiness benchmark, this is based on the College Board's suite of assessments, particularly the PSAT, which the College Board offers three levels of the PSAT, the 8, 9, the 10th grade, and the NMSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which students traditionally take in 11th grade. To note, the PSAT 10 and the PSAT NMSQT are the same assessments with a different cut score for college readiness, for the benchmark. So, what the College Board has looked at is students who meet a certain score on these assessments, they've been able to identify a predictive measure that a student who meets this benchmark has a 75% likelihood of earning a C or better in a freshman college course, which we believe is the strongest indicator out there for college and career readiness. And those benchmarks are on the screen. We look at two benchmarks, one for evidence-based reading and writing, also known as the ERW, and one for math. And so, you'll see the 10th grade cut score is 430 and 480 respectively, and the 11th grade is 460 and 510 respectively. Go to the next slide there. Over the last year, we implemented PSAT testing for all students in grades 9 through 11. And all of our 10th and 11th grade students have the opportunity to take the PSAT. Our goal is to have 100% participation. This past fall, 78% of our 10th graders took the PSAT, which was an increase of about 150. And 71% of our 11th graders across our schools took the PSAT, which is an increase of about 10 additional students. When we set our target earlier this year for our Dreams for RPS goals, our target for 1920 was to get to 12% of our students meeting the college readiness benchmark for both ERW and for math. We have fallen short of that target, and the total is 6%, which is a 4% reduction from last year. To note, the state performance on the same measure went down in the same year. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the comparison across our division, the region, state, and national, in the state, and you'll see the changes there. One caveat to note is art assessment practices for PSAT are not necessarily the same compared across the state. So, the state numbers does not necessarily reflect all 10th and 11th graders the way we are attempting to reflect all 10th and 11th graders. So, in some cases, students who take this test in other divisions or across the state are self-selecting into the test, whereas we are requiring all of our students to test. So, their numbers may look higher. They do not reflect the same student comparison, if that makes sense. Are there any questions?
Ms. Burke, then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Trying to think of the manner in which to phrase this with the college readiness benchmark data. Even though the state, as you just shared, their numbers fell as well. Moving forward, what do we have in place, or what we will have in place to have more students that are equipped, ready, to score better? I'm thinking in terms of students in particular. For instance, under this administration, more AP classes were added. Students must be given the opportunity to excel before they get to that point. It really goes back to elementary school. The more students that you have and gifted and talented programs, the more experiences that they have, the better that they will perform when they become high school students. So, my question is, moving forward, so that next year we won't see that downfall, in spite of what the state will have, what strategies or what programs or what's in place?
Yes, great, great question. So, the most important aspect is something that you've already alluded to, which is ensuring that students have a really strong foundation in the early grades and are being challenged appropriately in middle school and onward. So, the work of our strategic plan around Priority 1 and the adoption of a rigorous and college and career-ready-aligned curriculum is the most important thing we need to do. Our efforts around literacy and really setting the foundation for every student being able to read on grade level by 3rd grade will then accelerate the learning students are able to do 4th through 8th grade. Many of our high school principals and teachers reflect on the challenges they have with having students, not all students are prepared for reading on grade level at the high school level, which certainly affects your ability to learn the other subject areas. Similarly, in our math program, ensuring that all of our students are really on track to take and excel in algebra by 8th grade. We've talked about equity of these courses, these more challenging courses in middle school. And so, I believe if we do those things correctly, we will see a correlation with improved college and career readiness. I think, secondly, for our students who are already in high school, we've worked this year, a big priority this year, has been launching intervention programs. And in particular, at the high school level, we're launching a reading program, it will actually start, it starts this semester, and will become a course next year, which I'll talk a little bit about during our Program of Studies presentation, for students who are entering high school below level in reading. We have to attack that aggressively and quickly as soon as they're freshmen. So, I think some of those efforts, I believe, will move the needle here.
Paige?
So, Dr. Epp, thank you for this presentation. And you answered one of my questions, my colleague, Ms. Burke. But my second question, what about, have you identified the schools that have allure participation compared to other schools? And how, you know, what's the strategy to address the schools that have demonstrated allure participation?
Yes, so, we're digging into that. Actually spoke with some counselors on Friday and principals about what their hypotheses are behind this, and would certainly be interested in hearing Mr. Stuckey's thoughts here. We hear a range from attendance, so attendance on this one day, there's not a makeup, so attendance can be a factor, although that shouldn't account for the full range there. We hear that some students just simply do not want to take the assessment. And to me, that tells me we need to do more to communicate the value and purpose and benefit of the PSAT to families and students, even if they have no plans to attend college. The PSAT has many benefits. And I think historically, it's been thought of as an exam that you take only if you're going to college or have plans to go to college. And we're trying to rebrand that. So, I think those are the two big things we're hearing from schools. And so, we're trying to figure out how to rebrand that for students.
So, there's a strategy moving forward in place?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Stuckey?
I was just going to speak about that, me personally, I love taking tests and like seeing where my knowledge is. But in my school, and a couple of other schools, because I have a lot of friends, and we just talk about like how we take tests and what tests actually mean to us. I feel like personally, the 9th graders should not, not going to be forced to, but I don't feel like they should actually be open up to taking the PSAT at that grade level. I feel like that personally, they should be open up to more like tutoring programs. Like, instead of actually taking the PSAT, they should be taking like, just general end-of-the-year assignments just to see where they act logically and mentally. So, when they get to 10th grade, that's when they can start taking the PSAT so they can be open up to that experience. But I feel like just bombarding them and jumping them into taking the PSAT is kind of like scary to them. Because in my school, there's a lot of 9th graders that walked out to school when they heard they had to take a test, or just called their mom and said, I want to go home. And most, you can't really force a kid to sit in a room and take a test because it's going to be disruptive and mess up the learning environment for any other kid. So, I feel like personally, like 9th grade is like their first year into high school. They don't really know what to expect. I don't feel like they should just be walking into like that brick wall. They should be eased into it. At 10th grade, yes, I encourage them to take the PSAT. I feel like 9th grade, generally, they should just be like end-of-the-year assignments and trying to push them, like, because as you said, like, most kids don't really come into high school actually reading on a grade level. So, why really like try to force and encourage them to take the PSAT is only their grade levels, or what their scores only go just discouraging them from taking the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Epp.
Good evening again. I am here to report on Goal 7, which is enrollment. So, just to start off, we measure Goal 7 using our Fall Membership Report, which is our report that we submit to VDOE September 30th every year. It's important to note that this is a snapshot. It's very much a, this is a moment in time. This is what our enrollment is on this day. And also, that this data was pulled straight from the VDOE website, so you can go up there and pull it down and follow along if you're so inclined. So, moving to the next slide. One other note, I do want to note that enrollment is separate from ADM, or Average Daily Membership. So, again, enrollment is a snapshot of a particular point in time. ADM is the daily enrollment every day divided by the number of days a school has been in session since the first day of school up to March 31st. And that's a key driver for our funding from the state as well. So, again, moving on, you can see that if we take our September 30 membership from the 1819 school year and compare it to the membership report from September 30th for this current school year, we have met our goal. Our target for the start of the year was 25,075 students, and we came in at 25,212 students. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question regarding the students that are captured in that number. Does it include governor's school students? Does it include the K-12, you know, the homeschooling students? Does it include VPI? I just want to make sure I'm clear on the...
Yes, yes, to all of those. It also includes Patrick Henry students.
And then, so how many students are enrolled in the K-12 Vava program?
It's about 1,200 students. I don't have the exact with me.
Thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Simmons, I'm curious to know to what we attribute the increase in the number of students. Is it the school-age population has increased? Do we think a higher proportion of students are coming to our schools? I imagine that we want to see a higher proportion of school-age students coming to RPS if they live in the district. So, I'd just like a little bit more insight there.
Yeah, I think we're still figuring that out. I do want to give a shout-out to Mr. Hughes, though. A big piece of this is data integrity and data management. Leading up to the submission of this report, Mr. Hughes and his team did a great job of working with schools and with the SysOps to make sure that the data was in the system, that it was accurate, so that we could transmit it to VDOE. So, we feel really good about our data for this year, just due to those efforts. We probably saw an uptick there because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. And we will move on to the budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hudasko, do you think you could do the slides? Oh, Ali, you have it? Who's got the computer? Can you do it? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am excited to share our FY21 budget proposal. And there is a lot to absorb here. What I'd like to do is walk the board through it. We have a number of budget sessions coming up to dig in to all of the detail, but I wanted to make sure the board had a sense of the general key ideas in the budget and what we're trying to achieve. And of course, make sure the public has the same. So, with that, I am excited to dive in. Was there a question? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. There are eight sections that take us through both a reflection on the current year and our proposals for the future year, both for operating and capital. So, let's dive into Section 1, which is just a quick review on FY20, which is our current fiscal year of our adopted operating budget. So, you'll see there on Slide 4, our general fund revenue and our general fund expenditures. The third column there is our FY20 budget, and the last column shows the change from FY19 to FY20. The second line there, the city revenue, that's the 18.5 million that we received in new revenue from the city last year. Also noted there above that is the cuts that we made. And so, we wanted to just walk through quickly some of the highlights of the budget last year. So, if you slide, I'm sorry, turn to Slide 5. We were able to fund a 3% raise for all teachers and other staff. As you know, some of that funding came from the state, but about 2/3 of it came from the city. So, we were very excited to be able to do that. That was on top of 2% the year before. Going to Slide 6, now turning to Dreams for RPS, we were excited to be able to fund all of our priorities for the second year in Priority 1. I just want to remind everyone, we were able to add 10 additional art, music, foreign language teachers. I've had the chance to visit many of these classrooms, and it's exciting to see these folks working with our students, piloting new curricula. And we've talked about the VPI transportation. The costs have been more than we anticipated. But we are at an all-time high, or at least in recent memory high in terms of the number of children at VPI. And I think that is in no small part due to the transportation that the board approved in the last budget. Turning to the next slide to Priority 2, skilled and supported staff. We were able to add a couple of recruiters, which helped us get to the lowest day-one vacancies in recent memory. We're able to upgrade nurse pay rather significantly, which I believe we are now at a point where we, and Ms. Hudasko, you can confirm this, have no nurse vacancies. Is that correct?
I believe we may have one today.
Maybe one today, but that is a marked difference from where we were before. We are now able to compete. And I even have met one of our nurses who moved from the private sector into RPS because of our increase in pay. And as you heard from Mr. Simmons, we're in the process of starting to replace our HR system, again funded in Priority 2. Going to Priority 3, safe and loving school cultures. We were able to add more social workers and nurses, continue our trauma-responsive and restorative practices work, and even put money in for student recognition activities in our highest-need schools, where sometimes it is hard to gather those funds when you don't have significant funding coming in from a PTA. For Priority 4, deep partnership with families and community, on the next slide. We are expanding our home visit program. We added a second site for our welcome center. Now, we have a site not just at the South Side Community Center, but also at Bouchal Middle School. And we have broadened the mentoring program, as we have discussed, to include young women of color. And last, Dreams for RPS Priority, number 5, modern systems and infrastructure. We've talked about the purchase of 10 new buses. We completed the rezoning process, obviously now a great deal of implementation work. And we launched the new open enrollment and specialty school application, again, all funded through the FY20 budget. Now, let's turn to the FY21 budget. I want to start with just an overview of some highlights, similar to what I just did, and then I'll get into all the nitty-gritty, all the numbers. So, first and foremost, we are proposing a 3% raise for teachers and all staff in FY21. Of note, the governor's budget includes a 3% raise, but not in FY21, in FY22. So, if all things were to stay as they are, we would bear the full cost for the raise this coming fiscal year. I'm hopeful, though, through our advocacy, that some of the bills that are currently circulating in the Assembly would provide for these increases in next fiscal year. In fact, some have even pushed it further, which is exciting to see. Now, turning to Dreams for RPS Priority 1, a few of the things that are... Now, turning to Dreams for RPS Priority One, a few of the things that are funded in this budget proposal. First and foremost, funding our two STEM programs for our Passion for Learning Program at MLK Middle School and Henderson Middle School. We're proposing to add 12 new Advanced Placement and Other Advanced Course teachers to expand equity in our accelerated offerings. 10 new ESL teachers to better support our English learners. And continuing on our effort to make our instruction and our student experience as enriching as possible, 10 new art, music, foreign language, and physical education teachers as well, to continue the work that we started this year. In Priority Two, Skilled and Supported Staff, we are proposing significant raises for both custodians and bus operators. We spoke at length about bus operators. But custodians, we also feel it is important that we address their pay. Launching our male teachers of color program to retain and develop and attract more male educators of color. And I know this may sound like a small thing, but we piloted food. We had Panera at our PD Day on Friday. I received quite a number of emails about how much our teachers appreciated that, and we would like to be able to do that for all of our PD Days to help professionalize the experience for educators. Moving to Priority Three, Safe and Loving School Cultures. We're proposing three new high school counselors. By the way, we have it in the budget with Armstrong and Huguenot. Six new social workers for our high priority schools, and I'll say more about that in a second. And three new nurses, so that we can begin to move even closer to our goal of at least a nurse full-time in every one of our schools, which I know has been raised by many board members. Priority Four, Deep Partnership with Families and Community. We want to continue to expand our home visit program, expand the welcome center even more to provide better support for recent immigrant families. And per the strategic plan, launch Real Richmond, which is a new high school course about the unvarnished history of Richmond. And funding for student experiences is a part of the budget. Last, and Dreams for RPS Priority Five, Modern Systems and Infrastructure. We are proposing 10 new custodians to help ensure that our new schools are maintained and continue to look beautiful even after they are opened. 10 new buses and bus operator positions, which we hope we will be able to fill with some of the adjustments we're making in terms of pay. And to build on the work that we did last year with our equity fund, to actually increase it to $1 million to provide supports for high priority schools. And continue our work to fund the improvement of our school meals program. There's one more category of proposed increases, which I am calling Additional Basic Needs and Adjustments. These are just other things that have come up either from our school leaders, from board members, from community members. Additional things that are certainly related to the strategic plan, but not directly called out in the strategic plan. There's a long list of items, as you'll see in the slides that are forthcoming, but just a few to highlight here. We would like to fully maximize all state funding this year, meaning for programs like the K-3 class size reduction. For us to get the state dollars, we have to put up dollars. So it's basically, to get $3, you have to put up $2. And so we're proposing an additional $2 million here so that we can fully maximize those funds and continue to provide instructional aids, particularly on the K-3 levels. We love to be in a place where every one of those classrooms had an instructional aid. We want to add eight new middle school positions to continue our work to make sure there's equity in our middle school offerings. This is something which has come up quite a bit at the board. Increase our attendance support. This is an area where the data is indicating that we are behind where we were last year. I know we cut some positions there. And with full honesty, that may not have been the best move. And so we'd like to increase support here upon reflection. We still have more thinking to do around what are the right roles, but we want to make sure that there's funds there. Security is always an issue. This comes up frequently, so more equipment on that front. The Crossing Guard Program, which has been very popular and puts more money into our staff's pockets. We'd like to expand that to all elementary schools. And then funds to continue the bathroom blitz and other critical day-to-day repairs, which right now actually is not funded. We're really sort of borrowing from other pots, and so we want to make sure that it's fully funded next year. So with that, let me take you to the next slide, which gives you the big picture. At the top there, we have revenue with our FY '21 projected change. So you'll see first, our fund balance from last year is just under $1 million. I do want to remind the board that this board passed a policy which indicated that, I believe I have this right, half of any fund balance goes towards facilities. A quarter goes towards teacher legacy retirement fund. And then the remaining 25 cents is available for other purposes. This presentation, for the purposes of simplicity, is assuming zero additional revenue from the city. That means that what we got last year would be maintained, but nothing more and nothing less. The state revenue, we could see if we maximize all of the incentive programs for the state. That is, we put up all the money necessary to get all the matching money. We would see about 17.6 million from the state. And then we have a small amount of money in our general fund, federal and other. So the projected revenue change at this point for our general fund is about 18.5 million. On the other hand, the expenditures in this proposed budget are significantly more. So the salaries and benefits, so that 3% raise, plus the 1.17 step increase for our teachers and principals and nurses, those are the salary scales we decompressed over the last two years, is about 9.6 million. The Dreams for RPS categories comes in at just shy of 21 million. And those additional basic needs and adjustments come in at just over 9 million for a total of about 39.6 million. That leaves a delta of about 21.1 million, which at this time, the recommendation is, would be our request of the city. Before I dive in, let me just take any global questions and then go ahead and dig into the details.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Our student has to go.
And I do want to know, I showed Cory, there is a line item for furniture, in no small part due to Cory's testimony last time about the issues that he was facing. So thank you for that input and contribution.
Thank you. Cory, do you have any final parting words for us?
Yes, I just want to let everyone know to come out and support next Monday at the rally that we're going to have, and that to bring your T-shirts and bring your posters, because it's going to be the biggest event of the year.
Thank you.
You heard it here.
Okay, now to some of the details, moving on to Section Three, some technical notes. This first one is more for the public. Obviously, the board is aware that we have an operating budget and a capital improvement plan budget. Both of them are addressed in this presentation. Operating covers the basic day-to-day operations, salaries, curricular materials, transportation, and so on. And our capital budget is focused on our facilities, really things that extend the life of a building, a new HVAC system or new school construction. Things like replacing light bulbs or bathroom sinks are not in our capital budget. That is in our operating budget, and we've built in some funds for that. Second thing which sometimes causes confusion, now focusing just on revenue, is our overall budget actually is made up of our general fund, which is what we're talking about tonight, and special revenue funds, which we talk about when we do our grants. So our general fund in FY '20 was 311 million and change. The special revenue funds were about 87 million. That's everything like Head Start, Title 1, 2, 3, 4, our school improvement grants, IDEA, our special education grants, our food program, our federal lunch program, and so on. That chunk of money, which comprises about 20% of our budget, is significant and important, but it is largely formula-driven. It's far less discretionary. And we will talk about those throughout the year as we work on those grant proposals. So again, just for clarity for the public, the overall all-in budget was about 398 million last year. But it's that 311, the general fund, is the focus of this discussion and this presentation. Next, you'll see references to quote-unquote "high priority schools." I've already made that reference a couple of times. For the purposes of this presentation, and obviously we can discuss if this is the right threshold, we mean schools that have 60% or more of their students coded by the VDOE as disadvantaged. We all concede that the state's data, which largely comes from our data, is imperfect. But I do think a sort of common sense analysis of these schools suggests that this is generally the right group. Obviously, there are some schools that fall below the 60 that folks would consider to be high priority. But we did want to focus a good amount of the new funds towards these high priority schools from an equity perspective. We can also talk about whether that's the right threshold or whether we should be focusing even more intensely, say, on schools that are at 70% or above, which would cut it down to about a dozen schools. Next, the board had requested that we be a little bit more precise in terms of some of the FTE costs. So we are using average costs for positions that are called out in the budget. These are estimates based upon current individuals sitting in these roles. These include salary and benefits. So I do want to make sure that's very clear. These are not the salary figures you see here. These are with the benefits. And so whenever we use one of these titles, these are the amounts that we are using as our best projection of what the cost would be. Obviously, individuals vary greatly depending upon their seniority and other factors. Okay, so now let's dive into the details, starting on the revenue side. Again, this is a summary of what I shared at a high level before. The prior year fund balance in FY '21, that will carry over, assuming council re-appropriates it to us, This assumes flat city revenue. As you can see there, that 175 million number. The state revenue, again, assumes the governor's budget proceeds as is, which would be an increase of about 17.6 million. And then the smaller remaining categories, which again brings us to that 18.5 million in total projected increases in revenues. Now I'll dig into that in more depth, starting on the state side. First category on the state side is the standards of quality. These are funding groups that are related to the SOQs, the largest of which is basic aid, where we see a significant increase. And you can see the other categories there as well. The next slide takes us to the incentive programs from the state. And again, what you can see here is the state moved some things around. So they moved the compensation supplement, which was basically the money we got to help with the raise last year. A lot of that was poured into, for us anyway, the at-risk add-on. You see an increase of nearly $4 million there. You see the VPI number and some of the other programs. These all require local matches. So that 4 million and extra actually costs us a couple of million. And we built that all into the budget. But I do want to note that, that's not just a free 4 million. It requires local match as well. Next slide takes us to the last few state revenue sources, our categorical programs, lottery-funded programs, other programs. And then again, the total state revenue increase projected now, based on the governor's budget, would be 17.6 million. I will tell you, there are bills in the Assembly now, if you've been following Matthew's extensive emails, that would fund the SOQs at the level called for by the Virginia Department of Education, which are significantly higher than what is in the governor's budget. Delegate Ayer and Senator McClellan have both introduced bills to that effect. It is why advocacy is extremely important at the state level. I'm hopeful to see everybody in Richmond now, on January 27th, rallying in support of our teachers and our schools. Because if we can get that 17.6 number up significantly, we have a shot at getting everything in this budget. Oh, and then there's federal revenue in our general fund. It's a very small amount on the next slide. And then quote-unquote "other" revenue in our general fund from rental fees and such. And you see a slight decline there. And that's our revenue picture. Now, turning to the expenditure side, here's the summary again. Salaries and benefits, an increase of 9.6 million. That is the 3% raise we're proposing for all staff, plus the step increase for those groups that we decompressed. Dreams for RPS, just shy of 21 million. And the additional needs, about 9 million, for a total of about 39.6. So now, each of these, we have detail for. First, the salaries and benefits. I will note, there's also a healthcare insurance increase that we built in of about $1 million. That would mean that RPS fully absorbs the annual increase in healthcare costs, so no cost being passed on to our employees. We have been doing that for the last couple of years. Obviously, it's an expense for the system, but it's in turn a benefit for our employees. And that, we are proposing to continue to do so here in this budget. Next, turning to Dreams for RPS, starting with Priority One. I'm not going to read every line of this, but I do just want to try to orient folks to how it's set up. So you'll see on the left, starting with the state function code. I know the board had expressed interest in knowing how this lines up with the state function code expenditure, so we have a summary of that. First, you have the code. Then we have which priority we're talking about, broken down into each action. Then we have the FY '20 adopted budget. That's what we adopted last June. Then we have the FY '20 amended budget. That's after we made changes for the equity fund. We moved some things out of certain line items to create the equity fund. So you'll see some adjustments, though most of it stays the same. Then I know the board had asked for FY '20 actuals, so you'll see that as well. Anywhere you see awaiting council, those are funds that have not yet been transferred but are scheduled to be approved for transfer at the council's January 27th meeting. Then the FY '21 proposed change, that's what we're proposing to either add or decrease or keep the same. And then that takes you to the FY '21 proposed budget amount for that line item. So, let me just do the first one. Action 1.1, maintain 10 FY '20 and add 10 FY '21 art, music, language, PE teachers for equity of offerings at high priority schools. We budgeted $800,000 for that. It remained that way in the amended budget. Our year-to-date actual is just over $450,000, which makes sense. We're about halfway through the year. We are proposing to add $815,000. That's using the $81,500 average cost of a teacher for a proposed FY '21 budget line there, 1.615 million. It goes like that all the way through each of the priorities. Let me just draw your attention to a few things. Not just these teachers we're adding, proposing to add in 1.1, but also funds for the instruments, science equipment, art supplies, and PE supplies that go along with them, you'll see there as well. And then, most significantly in 1.1, a line item for $2 million for MLK and Henderson to build out the staff and supplies for the academies there. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do to flesh that out. That work is ongoing as we speak. But put that in as a placeholder to make sure that those were really robust programs. Action 1.2, you'll see a lot of the literacy work that we've been talking about. I think most significantly here, you'll see $830,000, which will help us fully max out state funds for reading specialists. That would result in additional 15 reading specialists and help us continue to pay for our reading specialist endorsement cohort, which we have with the University of Virginia. Those reading specialists would go towards high priority schools, again, with the lens of equity. Looking at 1.3, most of this is around professional development for the new curricula. 1.4, you see, that's the 12 additional AP and other advanced course teachers there at 978,000, again, targeted towards our highest priority schools. Next slide, going to 1.5, you'll see the largest spend there is 10 additional special education positions. That's, depending on the school and where it's needed, instructional compliance coordinators. These are individuals who basically are in charge of all things special education, make sure that the IEPs are done correctly and effectively. That when there doesn't exist an IEP, often that burden falls to the principal or to teachers, and that's just another piece of work that they have to do that they don't have time for. And so, we wanted to add in funding for that. And in some cases, related service providers, those are the speech pathologists or occupational therapy professionals to provide all the services that our students need. Turning to 1.6, the big addition here, really those, the two last pieces in 1.6. First, to begin our pilot of a newcomer academy for high school students who are recent immigrants to the country, and then the local match for 10 additional ESL teachers. That's on top of the 15 we did this year, and on top of, I can't remember the exact number, but the ones we did before, to continue to meet the needs of our growing English learner population. Turning to 1.7, we have heard a lot from principals, but also from board members, about doing something to intervene and support young people in elementary school who are having significant behavior challenges and making it difficult for the rest of the young people to learn effectively. And so we wanted to investigate this more deeply, potentially by creating a short-term placement program at the growing Amelia Street campus, which is really supposed to be about therapeutic support, to help kids get the supports that they need, so they can then return to their elementary settings. And that's one way of approaching this, but we want to look at other ways. We do know, though, from teachers and principals, that there is roughly 1% of students in elementary school who pose probably 50% of the challenges. We want to do a better job of supporting those young people, both for their own sake, but also for everybody else in those schools. Turning to 1.8, you'll see the biggest spends there are to increase VPI to 1,200 students, which would be fully maximizing our state funds. And then you'll see the largest line item is for transportation. Given the conversation we had earlier, more is needed. And hopefully, we'll be able, excuse me, to attract and retain more bus drivers with the salary enhancements, such that we may not need all of these funds, but we did want to make sure that we were budgeting appropriately. Turning to priority two of dreams for RPS, skilled and supported staff. In addition to the raise, which I talked about before, turning to 2.1, continuing to grow our recruitment team by additional two recruiters is going to be important, because we've added a lot of new teaching and other support positions in this budget. We need to hire those folks, it's one thing to put them in the budget, but they need to be recruited for as well. Looking at 2.2, continuing to do our work in terms of the male teachers of color program. 2.3, this is where you see the money for the custodian increases and the bus operator increases, along with the bus operator attendance bonus. 2.4, this is a lot of PD-related stuff, things that were moved into 1.3, some was moved into equity fund, but the biggest line item here is the food and other materials for the professionalization of PD days. 2.5, director of equity to help us manage our equity and inclusion programs. 2.6, to continue to do our work with RTR. 2.7, proposing a reduction here for this annual celebration, we believe the delta we can be made up through philanthropy. And then 2.8, I know this was important to many board members, adding a parental leave benefit there, still determining how many weeks of paid leave this would be, but based on our initial calculations, this was a good amount of money. Turning to priority three, safe and loving school cultures. In 3.1, a position to help us really push forward on our trauma-informed work. 3.2 is a continuation of the work we've been doing on restorative practice. A lot of the big expenditures are in 3.3 with additional social workers, additional nurses. Maintaining six behavior specialists, which are currently funded by an expiring funding source, you'll see there, that's about $528,000. And then the three additional counselors that I mentioned earlier. I'm going to jump to priority four, deep partnership with family and community. Some of the big items here, you'll see in 4.2, the expansion of the home visit program, that money is for stipends for teachers. You'll also see some increases at the welcome center, additional funds for translation services as our EL population continues to grow. And you'll see an increase in 4.5 for our contract to do our family satisfaction survey. This is something that we didn't have budgeted, and as we've expanded that and also expanded our customer service training, there's an increase there as well. And then the last item there, we had a funding gap which was able to be filled last year on the summer school partnership with the YMCA, so we wanted to budget that in this time around. And then turning to priority five, modern systems and infrastructure. In 5.1, the top expense there is the next phase of the HR and budget system, which Darren spoke about before. You also see $150,000 in the third line for the new data dashboard. We're interviewing prospective vendors on that one right now. Additionally, some positions to help us with our technology services and payroll and procurement. I think the next big items to draw your attention to are down in 5.4. You'll see the additional funds to take the equity fund to $1 million. You'll also see we added a special equity fund, this is for students, for fees related to graduation. We have kids who can't participate in prom or the class trip, or even get their honors tassels because of the costs associated with that, so we'd like to be able to cover that for our students. And then a small, we're calling planning team, to help us wrap our hands around registration, enrollment, and the school staffing applications, and what the implications would be for an equity-based budget. Right now, that's sort of being done with bubble gum and tape, and so wanted to add that in as well. And then last, 5.5 on this page, additional buses and the operators, the recruiter that Darren mentioned, to make sure that we can fill all those vacancies, the router, and reimbursement for individuals who are getting their CDL to, again, create an incentive for folks to come to RPS. And turning to the next page, 5.6, you'll see some of the things Darren spoke about in terms of the kitchen equipment, excuse me. And then in 5.8, as you see the additional custodians and a couple of other positions. And then that takes us to the third category of projected expenditures, and that's the additional basic needs and adjustments. There's a lot in here. The first line is the match for the K3 class size reduction that I mentioned. Early intervention reading funds, we want to maximize the eight additional positions for the middle school offerings. You'll see all of the tuition and seats for Maggie Walker, Appomattox Code RBA, where we're proposing an additional 15 seats to cover the incoming freshman class. I do want to note one item here, Patrick Henry appears to be running about 200K short for their operating budget this year, and so one thing to discuss is how to fill that and what that means for them and for us, so we've put a placeholder there. Some small things, the YMCA fees for open high school, where they take PE, was never budgeted, so we wanted to put that in. You'll see an associate for library media services to ensure that the library director is able to be out in schools. And some changes in the CIO budget, you'll see there at the bottom, to reflect some actual expenditures, but also to do some new things on dropout recovery. Related to priority two, in our sort of additional list, you'll see on the next slide, one thing here is stipends for what are called SISOPS. These are folks in schools who have other jobs, but they are tasked with doing all kinds of data entry work. We don't pay them extra, we should, it's important to recognize the work that they do, and we also think that potentially may lead to a better level of data entry. And then also, we would like to adjust the contracts for middle and high school counselors to 12-month, to really tackle a lot of the graduation and scheduling issues that we've had, we just need them year-round. Because it would be a shift, we'd make it opt-in in the first year, but there's an additional cost. And moving our instructional compliance coordinators, again, those are the sort of special education managers in schools to 11-month. Again, there's a lot of work that has to happen after the school year closes out and before it starts. And priorities related, I'm sorry, items related to priority three, you'll see the significant reinvestment in attendance there, and then the expansion of the crossing guard program, and a few other items there. And then last, on the next page, are additional items related to priority five. You'll see there, that's the funds for the security equipment, we're talking about radios, repeaters, magnetometers, things that help our schools maintain security. You'll also see $500,000 there, built in for non-capital maintenance expenditures, including the continuation of the bathroom blitz, but this is everything from an extra heater to an extra light bulb to a new sink, we want to make sure we're budgeting for that. You also see here a budget item for stormwater, which accounts for both our annual expected fee plus an annual repayment of our past due fees. Darren will do a presentation on that later this evening, so he can talk through that a little bit more. We even have $50,000 for sustainability efforts, such as tree planting, recycling, et cetera, many of which were promoted in a recent proposal we received. Also, you'll see 2,000 additional Chromebooks to continue our work there, a number of other items here. And then that takes us to the sort of overall summary by the state function code, so just shy of 30 million in instruction. You'll see about 3.5 million for administration, attendance, and health. A lot of that is the increase in attendance support and the nurses. Transportation there, about 3 million, operations and maintenance, 3.1, and the rest you can see, again, for the total of about 39.6. So that's the operating side, let me just quickly do the capital side, and then I'll pause for questions. As I'm sure everyone remembers, this current fiscal year received 19.1 million in new CIP dollars for FY '20. Those funds are being spent and are scheduled to be spent. We've been able to replace lots of boilers and HVAC systems, and replace leaking roofs and broken windows and so on and so forth. Here's the new boiler at Franklin Military, which looks decidedly more advanced than the ones from 1953 that we've seen pictures of. Obviously, there's the CIP new construction, which we have been discussing and is nearing completion, if I may call it that. So we're very excited about what we've been able to do and are doing this year, but looking towards next year, if you go to section seven, here's the list of proposed expenditures. And this is based on the existing maintenance plan that we have. I know we've discussed updating that. Obviously, some of these items could be discussed as to whether they make sense at this time, but this is what is in the plan as of this date. And then that takes us to the last part, which is the timeline. We are introducing the budget this evening. Then we have four budget work sessions scheduled, January 23rd, 20th, February 6th, and February 11th. We also have a school board meeting on February 3rd in there. Our goal is to have the school board approve an FY '21 budget on our February 18th meeting and submit it to the mayor. Then the mayor will submit his budget to council on March 6th. Of note, the general assembly session adjourns on March 7th. April 6th is the last day for the governor to take action. And then in the April-May timeframe, the council will adopt its budget and will come back to us. And then we, depending upon what that number is, will make revisions as necessary, and then by June, adopt our final FY '21 budget. With that, I'm glad to take questions.
Before we do that, I would remind my colleagues that we do have a work session on Thursday, and we have a whole lot of stuff here, so I don't think we have to try and find out everything tonight. I would also say that we have a public hearing on February 3rd as well, on the budget. So, in addition to everything else we'll be doing on February the 3rd, we will have a public hearing on the budget. So, with that, I will... Mr. Young, then Ms. Dorr, Ms. Page, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Barlow, Dr. Zabini, and Ms. Burke. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be brief, I promise. In brief, if enacted, this budget proposal would reverse all of our gains from last year relative to fiscal constraint. When this body cut $13 million from downtown, this proposal's call for 13% year-over-year increase in spending, absent any belt tightening, does not comport with the hard work done last year to reduce spending, nor does it acknowledge that we can save millions in operations if only we right-size our facility's footprint and close underutilized schools. We can both increase compensation for teachers and adopt efficiencies to pay for it. Madam Chair, I've already identified $18.9 million in either reductions in spending and/or cuts, and I'll submit them as soon as, for the purpose of that Thursday workshop. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Dorr?
Just a couple of thoughts for future sessions. One, it would be helpful to understand, and I know you did a good job at, first of all, great presentation, thank you, obviously a lot of work went into that, so I appreciate that. I would like to, and maybe this is potentially for when we have to prioritize, or hopefully we don't have to, but to understand what funds are contingent on state funds, so what line items are contingent, just maybe like a flag or something like that, just so that we can have an idea there. Two, I think a valuable discussion, and we've talked about this a little bit in our finance committee meetings, is to just make sure that we're being realistic about how much money we're going to spend related to our strat plan this year. You know, there's still some funds waiting on council, you know, I know hiring is taking a little bit longer than we might have hoped for some positions, so I think that's an important conversation that we should have as a group. I, three, I would like to just look at, when we talk about capital, we have some money, I don't have a clear picture, but I know that we have some money left over from the meals tax that isn't enough to fund a full school. I think we really need to look at that and look at our timing about school construction, and I want to make sure that we put that money to work while also acknowledging that we need to build a new George with, so kind of, I know there's a tension there, but I think it's a valuable discussion. And then lastly, I would agree with Mr. Young, I do think that it is important for us to make sure that we are being good custodians and looking at opportunities for efficiencies. So, those are my thoughts for future discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
First, I would like to say thank you for this detailed presentation. A couple of questions. So this is for future discussion. The step increase for teachers, so have, what does that look like, I guess, on average in dollars? And thank you for including that because I heard staff, staff, teachers, you know, when we talk about the raise, does that include a step increase? And what does that look like?
And just to clarify, if I may, we're proposing a raise and the step increase. They're not the same thing, yes. But we'll get you the average dollar amount for the step increase.
And to piggyback off of what Ms. Dorr said, the meals tax was a question because there is funding available. Yes, we want to see it put to work in particular to ensure that we start the planning for George With. And also, something, not really small, but the score printing, that number seems extremely high in, are there any cost savings or any other, you know, have we looked at all avenues as far as the printing?
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to start by saying, you know, thank you for the presentation. There's certainly lots more information here than we received at this stage last year. This was shared with the board and the public around two, so I haven't had yet the opportunity to fully delve into all of the details that are presented here, but I am thankful to see that. So I think the first thing I want to highlight, which, you know, what I believe to be the headline of this discussion, is that we cut too much last year. And I'm thankful to see that we're looking to correct that error in this upcoming budget, but it is significant that we cut 20 attendance officer jobs last year for a proposed savings of about $900,000. And this year, we're going to be, we're hoping we can re-staff that department with an additional 20 attendance officers. That's really big. And, you know, we're not going to pick up where we left off because there's been, you know, folks are going to be gone. And so this isn't budget-related, but I do want to make sure that we talk about the possibility of hiring those folks back. I know we had a really talented team of staff members who are out there knocking on doors and doing this work, and I think it would behoove us to do everything that we can to ensure that we are able to bring some of that expertise back into the district. The, some other questions, thoughts that I have in looking at the document, what I want to make sure I'm clear on is what has changed from the proposal that was introduced in terms of the fiscal year '21 spending and the original Dreams for RPS budget to what we are looking at now? And the reason why I am unclear is because the way it was presented in the last, in that document, I believe the, it showed that the original budget was $31.95 million, but I believe a lot of that included carryover dollars. So now, as we're looking at the additional operating costs, it's somewhat difficult to compare apples to apples. So it would be helpful to just see kind of an overview of what has changed from our original plan when we adopted the strategic plan, and that was presented last year. In terms of the breakdown, I am thankful to see the state function, although, you know, so the hope with having the state function codes identified here is to be able to correlate back to our budget document. And because we, these are just broken down at the highest level, so we really only have one of the four digits, that we're not able to make the comparison with the original budget document. And so that would be helpful to see. Some unfinished business that I think we should consider is looking at the salary, the salary decompression for our assistant principals. This is something that we promised addressing last year. My hope was that when we had realized that we had over-budgeted for the principal salary decompression in last year's budget, we had allocated originally a million dollars for that. And then it was discovered that we only needed 500,000, that we could have used that for the assistant principals. And so, you know, right now, there's not really alignment in terms of the way we are, we have structured the pay schedule for assistant principals with the principals. And I think that there is, in terms of the, you know, different pay for 10-month versus an 11-month, you know, employee, there's lots of discrepancy there. And another question that I have is just regarding the fund balance. I know that the board did adopt that policy, but my understanding was that the, we were always encouraged to include like a $1.5 million cushion in terms of the fund balance to carryover from one year to the next. And so it is concerning to me that this year, our fund balance is just down to $900,000. I mean, if you recall, last year, you know, we had a $13 million fund balance, we had a $6 million fund balance, and we certainly do not want our fund balance to get up that high, but I'm not sure we want our fund balance to get down this low either. And then the other thing that kind of comes to mind for me, just as kind of thinking in retrospect to the rezoning work, is, you know, I mean, we were talking about rezoning options that would have increased our transportation costs really very significantly. And here we are today, kind of, you know, talking about how impossible it is to hire bus drivers. And so I just, I just want to make sure that we pause and recognize that. The other thing that happened as part of our rezoning effort was that we agreed to have, you know, a certain number of Carver students bused to Mary Mumford. And you all know that, you know, I have mixed feelings about that because I'm not sure that it sends the right message that a predominantly white school is better than a predominantly black school. But that aside, you know, we basically adopted a rezoning plan that now has required us to be able to spend an additional $100,000 for Carver, for both transportation and then subsidizing some after-school costs. And again, I just want us to recognize that that was a choice that we made outside of this budget decision, but that will impact our budget. So now, you know, that is going at the front of the line. And, you know, that $100,000 could have also been used for a staff member at Carver, an assistant principal or otherwise, that would have benefited all of the students at Carver rather than just a few that are going to be potentially a bus to this other school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Cameras, for this budget document. It's the most wonderful time of the year to be a school board member, so I'm excited to kick this all off. I do want to, I do want to start by saying that generally speaking, I appreciate the posture of this budget on the front end more than I did last year. And I do think that this is the time of the year, this is the time of the budget process where it is very important for us to focus on the needs of the school district. And this was not a, not the most modest, this is not the most modest ask in the world. And I appreciate that because I don't think our needs are modest. I think we've got really significant needs in the school system. So generally speaking, I'd like to say I appreciate that. As Ms. Gibson pointed out, the budget document did come a little later, so I've only had the ability to do so much analysis on it. But first of all, thank you for that. I look forward to digging into more of the particulars as we move forward. And I appreciate what a couple of my colleagues have said about finding efficiencies in the budget. I do think, of course, that's important. But I think it's also incumbent on us to remember that we should be sensitive about what cuts we're making on the front end if we're cutting things that are needs. And this was a concern that was brought up last year. It's a concern that, as Ms. Gibson noted, we probably did make cuts that were not, not vetted to the degree that would have been ideal. So I also want to say that I appreciate the administration recognizing that, not being too proud to not point it out as something that we need remedy. And I just encourage the board to focus on our needs now, and we'll have plenty of time to talk about efficiencies. We'll have plenty of time to talk about how to actually make these numbers work, in particular when we have a better idea of what we are going to be receiving from the state and from the city. To that end, I do have a question for the administration, which is about whether we have heard any signals from city leadership about what expectations might look like this year. So I'm curious to know if we've heard anything.
Nothing concrete, though my understanding is that there will not likely be any new city revenue sources this budget cycle. So I think any increase would be largely driven by increases in existing revenue sources. For example, if property assessments were to continue to rise, which obviously is something which understandably causes great consternation for property owners, but if that were to be the case, that is most likely the largest driver right now of an increasing city pie. So I think it would be, that's, that would be our source for this cycle. But I don't have anything concrete.
So it's safe to say we don't expect major tax increases in an election year?
I think that is safe to say.
Okay. And then the other thing that I do want to point out, and I think our board has been consistently committed to increasing compensation for our staff members in RPS, and I really appreciate that in particular. It's well documented that teacher retention is a challenge for our school district, it's a challenge for many of our neighboring school districts. So I'm glad to see this 3% increase. I'm glad to see the step increase as well. It's still frustrating, right? It's a huge line item in our budget, and it's a very important line in our budget. But when you look at the rate of inflation, when you look at all the work our teachers are actually putting in, it's frustrating to think it's unlikely that we can do better. Of course, I'm, you know, I know we'll be weighing a lot of, a lot of these considerations, and nearly $7 million is nothing to scoff at, but I, I'm certainly hoping that we'll see more, more support on the state level in particular for teacher salaries and encourage those listening and board members to continue to advocate on both the state and local level for additional resources for our students and our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Dr. Zepini?
Thank you. You noted that there was an increase for nurses, nursing staff, right?
Yes, in terms of the number of nurses?
Or their salary?
Both.
Okay, so is that?
Just to clarify, we increased the salary for the current fiscal year, so that they are currently being paid the increased salary. What we are budgeting for next year is their step increase on the new scale and additional FTEs so that we can get closer to that, that threshold of at least one full-time nurse for every campus.
Okay, thank you. And so that's CNAs, LPNs, and RNs? And how many of each of those do we have for?
I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that for the next budget discussion.
Okay, because if you said that you're giving them the increase, which is great, but that number would mean something different, depending on if you're a CNA, LP, and RN.
Yeah, there's actually three different salary schedules, and we focus most on the RN because that's where we want to focus our attention, but I can get that information for you for the next budget work session.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cameras, so much. This is a lot of information, but it is in greater detail. I do appreciate that, as my colleagues have already stated. Just want to make sure that I'm reading a couple of things correctly. High-priority schools as listed? I did not see George With or Huguenot listed there? The state does not consider them as being high-priority schools? Did I miss something?
For the record, the high-priority designation is just something that we created. There's no high-priority designation for the state. That list is a starting point. I think we should discuss it and decide, are there schools that should be added to it? Maybe there are schools that come off it, but we wanted to give a sense of, when we said high priority, what were we talking about? I didn't move any schools on it because I just wanted to use the data as it exists. My sense is that both Huguenot and George With, the full extent of their disadvantage-ness is not being captured in the state data, which is why maybe it's not at that 60% level. So, but we should certainly decide and talk through what, which schools are on that list and which are.
I'm in agreement with the schools that are listed. I was just surprised with knowing how many times we've talked about George With being overcrowded, George With's furniture piece, George With having enough faculty and staff persons to address the ESL population. I highly recommend that George With is added to that list. I want to say Huguenot, too, but at least Huguenot is in a new building, and they do have other advantages that aren't in place at George With. My other question is, so would you please investigate that to that point and revisit that? My other question is, with the 3% raise, thank you so very much, maybe, hopefully, maybe the governor will change his mind with that proposal regarding the 3% raise for teachers. But in the meantime, the JROTC presentation this afternoon and previously, I'd like to see some information regarding investigating compensation there, being mindful of the data that was presented earlier in our earlier meeting, their attendance rate, their graduation rate, their disciplinary rate. They are coming together effectively as a team to show what our children can do. A lot of our children look forward to that opportunity, to have that support. And I don't want us to be in a position where we would lose those persons, but if they haven't, if they're still working on a first-year teacher's salary, and they come to us from the military with 20 years of experience or plus, plus several high degrees, and it's just 14 of them, and I also see a lot of what they're doing at Franklin Military because, as you know, I volunteer there every Tuesday afternoon. So please do investigate that as well. And my last question is, with the meals tax, as already stated, I do hope that, again, we have the opportunity to, at some point, have the funds to build a new George With, and that list also included a new Woodville Elementary School. And my last thought is, maybe this is there, with the magnet school piece, was that in the proposal that you had regarding, I'm thinking about Bellevue being a magnet school. Was that in the, the cost of that? Was that included? Or that goes to 21, 22? 21, 22, got it. I'll tick it off my list. So I had three things. We're good? Thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to also express support for getting more feedback on the JROTC leadership and teachers as well. I know that they act as coaches and mentors and have many responsibilities beyond that of a typical teacher, so I'd love to see more information about that. And also, taking into account revenue sources that these instructors receive elsewhere from military benefits and things of that nature. But it certainly sounds to me like there may be some adjustments that need to be made.
Ms. Page.
Another question. So Superintendent Cameras, so your budget presentation, our priorities have been infused in this presentation. Appreciate that. And I'm in total agreement to find efficiencies where we can. But also, I want to highlight that this budget really highlights the needs of our students when we highlighted the priority schools. And so we really need to get out and advocate on the state, for state funding. But my question to you, are we prepared? And I know you are, but still want to ask the question. Are you prepared to make those adjustments? And I guess, you know, we'll be going back, you know, when that time presents itself. But the funding is not what we expect to receive on making those cuts.
Well, I am the eternal optimist, and we have a lot of advocacy ahead of us. So my perspective on this is, let's keep shooting for all of it. And if we do fall short, certainly I will come back to the board with a proposed prioritization. But I don't think we should negotiate against ourselves with this very important year in front of the Assembly. And so I think we should just fight for every dollar and see where things land. But certainly, if that time were to come, yes, I would prepare something for the board to consider.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one other question is regarding the cost of trailers. I know that that's come up in our finance committee meetings, and I was wondering if we could get an update in terms of what the costs are projected for the trailers, if there is an overage, and if that overage has been considered in next year's budget.
Thank you all. I will just say very quickly, the only thing I really didn't notice was moving expenses. We're going to move a lot of people and a lot of things this summer. And having moved not many times, but once is enough. It's expensive and challenging to do that. So I just want to be sure that we cover those expenses of moving everything out of the old and into the new. Thank you. Okay. So, thank you, Dr. Cameras. I think you just earned a doctorate. Okay, so now we are going to backwards because I missed, and I'm sorry.
Yes, 701 was incorporated into the 21 budget. That was supposed to be the actuals, which are in there, so it's all together.
Thank you very much. So then, 7.03, receive the financial statement for the months ended November and December.
And while Ms. Braga is walking up, I do want to say thank you to her and to Mr. Simmons for their help in preparing the budget. Ms. Braga somehow remembers every number in RPS's history when it comes to budget, so thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members, Superintendent Cameras. So this evening, you have a report for both November and December, since we had canceled that second meeting in December. Just wanted you to know why you have two reports for this evening. But let's talk about December, since it's the most current one. We are trending the way I expected to see us trending. We always lag a little bit in the revenue, and that's not an issue because, of course, the City of Richmond covers whatever we spend, and also they give us our appropriation on a quarterly basis. The expenditures look fine. And something that we've been bringing to your attention pretty much every month is related to how we're trending on the non-contracted personnel. And we are still looking good. We are about $42,000, having spent $42,000 less this year than we did a year ago. May I answer any questions?
Ms. Dorr. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Braga. Perhaps you could speak to the trailers, and is that reflected in this report?
I need to go back and look. I'm not sure whether they're being captured here or in the capital budget, and I need to go back and look.
Because if I recall, we had for some time been putting it in the capital budget, and then the city required us to move it out of the capital budget.
Well, for a couple of years, we had some cash in the capital budget because it was appropriated by the city with the sale of Arlington Road and a couple of other things, like a reappraisal of our fund balance. We were able to cover it that way. But I still need to go back and look and see what's occurring right now and how much we've spent year-to-date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braga. Okay, now we're moving to receiving for action the proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar.
Good evening. Attached, you will see the calendar for your vote this evening. We received minimal feedback online after the second draft was posted. However, we did make one modification based on some actions of this weekend. And that is, in the draft that you had seen previously, for next year, the VEA day had been marked as a student half-day with an afternoon teacher workday to allow time for teachers who wanted to attend the rally to do so. Given the energy around advocacy here in RPS, we made an adjustment on the calendar to just make that a full teacher workday next year. No school for students, just in anticipation of continued excitement around advocacy.
And just to clarify, that that workday could be used for advocacy?
Yes, yes. It also could be, for non-participating teachers, could be a workday.
Thank you. Ms. DeSco, now we need a motion.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one other thing. After you vote on this, we will do the formatting. So doing the request we had last time to add the board meetings on the bottom. But this is just approving the dates, as well as we've received requests to layer in assessment pieces. So this is just the opportunity for the board to approve the calendar, and then we'll format it.
Is there a motion to approve the calendar as presented? Ms. Dorr has moved. Is there a second?
I motion to approve the calendar as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dorr?
I do have a, not really related to this motion, but I do have a question about the 27th. So if now is not the right time, can you just direct me to the right time?
27?
The lobby day, VEA day.
Oh. Let's do that later. Ms. Burke, did you want to talk about the?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was, but Mrs. DeSco did address it regarding the school board dates to add, so thank you.
All right. Then we will have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk? Ms. Page?
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jason, were you going to take the VEA question, or did you want me to do so? Or we're doing that later?
I defer to Ms. Owen. When would you like to discuss? Monday, January 27th?
Whenever you feel like talking about.
I am more than happy to.
Just, thank you. Just to, one, just a quick clarifying question. One, super happy about it. Super excited about the 27th. Are teachers getting paid for that day? And my second question slash, there's been some community groups that have offered care for children at a reduced cost. If there's a way to get that information out to the broader RPS network so that if families that have an unexpected day and are struggling with finding what to do with their children, we can give them some resources?
Yes, teachers are paid for the day. And if you can send me any information you have, we will get it out far and wide. And that goes for everybody. Thank you. I can't hear you.
Anything else?
There might be something else.
For clarity, did you want to mention the central office, since that's come up?
Yes, all of RPS is closed. We have many central office folks who have children. And so if they wanted to participate, it would have been difficult. So, yes, it's the entire system.
But we're still having the public hearing.
We are still having the public hearing that evening.
At 6 o'clock, George Mason?
Yes, ma'am.
That's on the renaming of the new school where George Mason is. Okay, all right. Then moving on to 8.02, receive for the second read and action, policy 5-6.3. Dr. Epp.
Good evening again. We presented this for first read at our previous board meeting. We did not receive any additional feedback since the first read. I did do research at the board's request in terms of comparable policies and practices in neighboring divisions. The weights at Hanover, Henrico, and Chesterfield, rather than one weight for honors and another, a second weight for AP or dual enrollment or IB, they do a half point for honors and a full point for AP, IB, and dual enrollment. However, both Chesterfield and Hanover also provide a sliding scale of the application of that weight based on the grade. So, for example, an A-minus would not, an A-minus and an AP class would not earn a full point weight. It would earn a reduced point rate. And so if you want to see what those look like, they're sort of different versions of a matrix model where depending on your, these schools are also on an A-plus, A-minus scale, which we are not. So they account both for a different weight, but also an A-plus, A-minus. But the overall headline is, rather than one and two weighted points, they do .5 and 1. The only other sort of suggestion or feedback I've heard is a desire to abandon weights and ranks altogether and move towards a Latin model, which would be based on your GPA, you are cum laude, magna cum laude, summa cum laude. So those are the, just as it relates to alternatives or differences in weights, that's the, those are the options or suggestions I have to consider. What's that? But at this point, we're not preparing to make changes. We are bringing this for adoption.
Okay. So again, we need a motion to adopt the proposed policy. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we adopt the proposed policy as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the proposed policy 5-6.3. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for doing that investigation. My vote will be to abstain from this simply because I feel very strongly that this is an important equity issue that we need to address in terms of the weighting of the grades. And this is something I've heard from students, to be fair, in addition to, you know, having my own feelings about the way that the system is structured now. And so I appreciate the other amendments that were made, but I did want to provide rationale on why I'll abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Any further discussion? This will take a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Gibson?
I abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Moving on to 8.03, we will receive for a third read and action, policy 7-3.11, use of computer technology, and 8-3.2, acceptable computer system use.
Good evening again, everyone. Wanted to start off just by sharing that we heard your feedback, and we went back to the drawing board on this policy. It was not our intent, nor is it our role, to be big brother here. We didn't want that to come through. So we went back and just presented a very basic boilerplate acceptable use policy. I reviewed this with our tech director, with his team. We all feel that it meets the needs of the team and the staff without being overly prescriptive.
Okay. We would, we would need a motion and a second. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a discussion? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to talk one about just our process and our policy adoption. This was something that we discussed during our governance training at the VDOE. And if I understood the folks from the, I'm sorry, from the Virginia School Board Association, that the standard process is that when we vote to approve each read, and so we would have approved like the first read, and then we would approve the second read. And the reason why I bring that up is because, you know, we're saying that this is the third read, but it's essentially entirely different from where we began. And so I wonder, you know, in terms of ensuring that we get feedback and such, you know, if we're following good protocol in terms of policy adoption. My question is regarding the input. I'm thankful to hear that you reviewed with some of the folks at central office. But I think it's of critical importance that it was also reviewed with teachers. We received a lot of feedback on the initial, the last round. Many teachers came and spoke on the topic. And so I'm wondering if this revised policy has been reviewed by teachers. And then the other point I wanted to make is that, you know, I do think that the revised language is an improvement on where we began. But I also think it is important to state that we value and appreciate, you know, the speech of our staff and kind of can also include language that speaks to the resolution that the board has adopted so that there isn't any question. Some of the language that remains in the document still, I think, leaves some room for question in terms of what's allowed. You know, I mean, essentially, we have lots of teachers that post on, support our schools, and they might post concerns that they have. And I'm still not sure that they are protected under the policy guidelines that are now stated.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow, Dr. Sapini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very sensitive to the fact that we're trying to get a lot done in the next couple of meetings. We've got a lot on our agenda. But I do think that in light of the significant changes- changes here, it may be helpful to have one additional read, so a, a second read of the overhauled version here, so we have an opportunity to, to look at it in a little more detail and get additional feedback from key stakeholders.
Dr. Sapini?
Thank you. I don't want to assume anything, but do typically we, as Ms. Gibson mentioned, since our teachers are on the front lines with various things that come up that we're trying to make changes to or whatever have you, do we send out anything asking for feedback?
In, in this case, we did, we did not, but the changes were a result of the, the feedback from teachers at public comment, from the board members, and that's why we revised the, the policy and essentially started over. So we did take that feedback.
Ms. Lilly? Is, do we need to have a second?
Well, wait. It's up to the board as to if they're not going to move forward with one policy. I would say that there is a motion on the floor to approve both. I would also say that the policy as it was updated was posted to board docs that was available to the public, so it's their opportunity to give feedback as they did the last time that the, that the policy was provided. So teachers at that particular time gave feedback as well. So I think as Mr. Simmons said, that information and feedback from teachers previously was incorporated in the rewrite and they were, it was available to them to comment on tonight as well. As to whether the board moves, moves both forward at this particular time, it's, it's up to the board, but at this time, the motion was to approve both as it's read in the, in the call for the action.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we welcome, move to the vote. Mr. Barlow?
Certainly preference, yeah. Madam Chair, yeah.
Mr. Young?
I just inquired of my colleague from a second, how important this was for an opportunity for him to have another read. I gladly withdraw my, my second to defer to my colleague, Mr. Barlow.
Ms. Burke made the second. Ms. Burke made the second. So Ms. Page and Ms. Burke. So we will continue with the vote.
Mr. Barlow?
Abstain.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Dorr?
Abstain.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Abstain.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you.
We'll bring it back with revisions at the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Then we moved it. I'm sorry. Okay. Eight point zero four, receive for action, recommendation to address $130,000 budget shortfall.
Got it. So hello again. As. Is there a mouse? Can we go to the next, next slide, please? So as a reminder, administration has proposed using $130,000 from the teacher legacy account in order to fund the gap in the, in the legal services line for this year. Even if every eligible teacher opted into the program this year, our total liability would be about $1.1 million. We have $1.5 million budgeted. There's essentially no benefit to prepaying this amount other than it does get it paid off sooner, but there's no, we're not paying any interest, there's no real benefit here, which was why we recommended this, this pot of money. Next slide, please. We were also asked to provide an update of some of the other board actions from the January 4th meeting and the status of those actions. So the school board deputy clerk, which was the associate position along with the stipend that that person received for being the clerk, that was eliminated, reducing $85,000 from the budget. The meals line was reduced by $10,000 and the adopted budget amount was $795. The current spend there is $3,300. The superintendent's budget was reduced by $75,000. We reduced student banquet fees by $6,000 and combined that with other initiatives. We also reduced technology costs, system costs by $100,000. This was a challenge primarily because most of our systems are academic in nature and those are funded by, by title grants, so we had to find something that would hit the operating budget. So to do so, we reduced $67,000 from our CisCloud contract. We found some redundancies here between this vendor and their offerings and gaggle. And as of this month, we reduced $40,000 from our tandem contract, which works with our, our Aspen system. We also reduced translation services by $50,000 by bringing some of that work in-house. So those were the other options, I'm sorry, the other items that the board asked for additional input on.
Is there, is there a motion to? Mr. Young?
Madam, madam chair, just as a reminder, I know I shared this at the last meeting, I think, but the legal ad hoc committee did identify both the majority opinion and minority opinion on this has been disseminated, so I'm not going to belabor the point that all my colleagues are in receipt of.
So are you the chair of the committee?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Are you presenting as a motion, the majority report?
I am, I'm not, but I'll gladly defer to either of my, my two colleagues on the committee if they would like.
Thank you. And those are?
Liz and Scott.
Okay, so would either of you make a motion about this $130,000 budget shortfall?
Yes, I just need the exact language. So moved. But I'm, I move that we, uh, accept the $130,000, the administration's recommendation to, to fill the $130,000 budget shortfall with the legacy early retirement account savings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Young?
Uh, thank you, just briefly, because I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but though I am, I will not be voting in support of this motion. I introduced an alternative approach that would have reduced our FTE count in the central office. I think that's more prudent than instead deferring dollars that will go to our, our teachers' retirement funds. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, madam chair. I too have concerns about the recommendation, much in part, we, we spent some time looking at the budget and I noted that our fund balance is now down to less than a million dollars and, and this, you know, is also using essentially what would be fund balance dollars to, to fund this. And so I, I'm not, not going to vote in, in support of this. And as we are talking, I also want to note that, you know, I do want to ensure that we include our line item for, for meals since we're using fund balance to, to pay for that this year. And likewise, I have concerns about having eliminated the school board deputy clerk position. Thank you.
Further discussion? All the question, madam clerk?
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
No.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we move to eight point zero five, receive for action, the personnel actions.
Good evening. You have a hard copy as well as on board docs of the personnel actions for this evening. This includes the nomination of 41 employees, the change of contract of 10 employees, the resignation of 16 employees, the furlough of 18 employees, the return from leave of six employees, the retirement of five employees, the termination of one employee, the name change of two employees, and unfortunately, the passing of one employee.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? A call for the question?
Mr. Young?
No, specifically because it adds to the FTE count downtown.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Eight point oh six, receive for action, board travel and district activity requests.
Madam Chair, we have one request that is for you to attend the Southside Regional Conference. Estimated cost is $58.25. Conference is March 5th and it is in, it will, it's the only request I have this time.
V S B A, regional.
Sounds steep, but I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Once again, is there any discussion? Then let us have our vote.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to board business. Receiving a legislative update, Mr. Stanley.
Good evening, Chairwoman Page, Vice Chair Burke, Superintendent Camerus and the Board. Here tonight for a legislative advocacy update. We're very excited about our advocacy efforts at RPS. I really feel the energy with really building the culture, embedding that through RPS. We have had advocates really start to pop up all over the city and really rally around our efforts to get better school funding. As evident by all the teachers that do plan to attend Monday's rally, our community is really ready to come out and show support. We have been really busy in the last month with some of our advocacy efforts. I think many of you are aware of them. On the opening day of session this year, our Student Advisory Council led a press conference where they highlighted some of our legislative priorities, requesting that the General Assembly move forward with funding some of those items. We also held our first advocacy summit this year. At Studio 23 back on January 11th, we had over 100 attendees come out and print new advocacy posters and T-shirts. Mayor Stony came, our students from the Student Advisory Council helped lead that summit, and we've done some follow-up trainings and workshops with Studio 23 and will continue to do those. We found that it's a really great hands-on activity that really allows all ages to participate in advocacy. I was really inspired by some of the parents that came out that day and talked about how they were able to make the connection with advocacy with some of their young, young children. So really excited about those efforts. We've also been holding several advocacy trainings across the city in recent weeks. So far, we've had them in the East End, West End and North Side. Tomorrow, we have our final scheduled advocacy training. We've actually turned it more into a workshop in partnership with some of our teacher advocates and the Fund Our Schools campaign. We're going to do a brief training for folks on how to visit the General Assembly, what to expect if they come down on Monday for the VEA and Education Lobby Day. And then we'll also be prepping interested attendees and preparing testimony, rehearsing that testimony for committees, as well as writing letters to legislators. We'll have some form letters ready to go for them to get them started and then also allowing folks some time and providing some materials for people to create more signs. We've been distributing the signs and T-shirts that we made at our advocacy summit as well, and I'm hoping to see lots of red and blue T-shirts on Monday. We're continuing to send regular advocacy updates to you all and posting them to the advocacy page on the RPS website, really continuing to direct people to that website, rvaschools.net/advocacy, to see those updates and download additional materials and resources that can support them in their advocacy efforts. We have an advocacy toolkit, our legislative agenda, our policy positions. We'll be adding form letters that folks will be able to customize and send to their legislators and then some other family-friendly talking points. So really trying to consolidate all information there. If you ever need anything, please visit that and always feel free to contact me if you have any questions or feedback or need any other additional items. I do have some specific updates for you tonight regarding our legislative priorities. We have been, we have done our initial analysis of all the bills and budget amendments that have been introduced, as well as the governor's proposed budget, and I prepared for you slides that highlight each one of our priority areas and what the current options are on the table for the General Assembly to consider as they're formulating their budget and addressing some of these priorities. As far as equity-based funding goes, the governor and his proposed budget did allocate a significant increase to the at-risk add-on program. It is the largest increase that has ever been proposed. From some conversations that I've had, it sounds like the reason why the equity fund was not put into the governor's budget was not necessarily indicative of the governor's commitment to equity, but rather just a timing issue. The Board of Education's proposals came out a little late in the, in the planning cycle for the state budget, so we understand that there is some openness and I've also heard from Delegate McQuinn that she is very committed to that equity fund and so we're looking forward to working with her and Senator McClellan and some of our other delegation members to advance that in the coming weeks. Monday morning is going to be a big hearing date for the equity fund and the Board of Education's proposed revisions to the SOQs. At 7:30 a.m. that day, there is an education subcommittee meeting and they will hear Delegate Ayers' bill, HB 1316, and be receiving testimony. So I know that aligns nicely with the, with the big education lobby day and I think that we're going to have some packed committee rooms. We will keep you updated on hearing dates for Senator McClellan's SB 728. Again, both that bill and Delegate Ayers' bill do encompass the entirety of the Board of Education's recommendations. It is a lot of money and we don't know if the state has the capacity to forward all of those things, so we are prepared, working strategically with our delegation members and leadership, to possibly be able to at least advance the equity fund if we can't get all of the other SOQ recommendations advanced. Moving on, priority one is early childhood education, and this is somewhat easy this year because the governor had proposed such a large increase and comprehensive policy package for early childhood education. So we're very closely following the bills and those budget items that he has proposed. In addition, Senator McClellan has introduced an amendment at our request that would provide for an extended day pilot program for VPI, providing for up to eight hours of VPI care. That is something that we have received some positive feedback on and we would count on your advocacy to continue to push that forward if that's a priority. It's something that I do anticipate to be a stretch for some of the money committee staffers because it's just not a traditional use for VPI dollars, but if that's something that we would really like to see advanced, then we can really use your help in advocating for that. And I also just added a little item in here that Delegate McQuinn has introduced for our Virginia Preschool Initiative Minority Fellowship Program. I think that this is a great way to continue to encourage our teacher workforce in early childhood education. childhood education, specifically in places like the city of Richmond. For teacher compensation, priority two, there have been a number of different proposals announced or introduced. As you're aware, the Governor just proposed a three percent salary increase in year two of the budget. We've seen a range of other proposals, from changing that to four and a half percent increases in both years, to just adding a five percent increase in year one, to bumping the three percent increase in year two to a five percent increase. There's also been one amendment that is just language that provides some compensation adjustment flexibility that would allow for, for that funding to also fund, support staff positions in addition to just the SOQ-funded positions. We are continuing to discuss the issue of the local match and the burden that that places on financially stressed localities that want to award more teacher compensation but may have to reprioritize other spending to be able to do that. So that is a conversation that is ongoing with members, asking them to continue to consider fiscally stressed localities and what they decide to do with that local match requirement. Moving on to priority three with support staff, there have also been a number of different proposals to address this issue. Several members, including Senator McClellan, have introduced budget amendments to completely rescind the support cap, again, at four hundred and six-plus million a year. That is going to be a bit of a stretch, and so there are a few other proposals on the table that would also make progress in that area. There are several members that have introduced language-only amendments that would just require the state to create a plan to get rid of the cap within five years. That's something that we actually put forward last year as well. There's the proposal in the Governor's budget to actually fund school counselors at the ratios adopted by the General Assembly last year, since they had the last-minute budget maneuver that did not fully fund the legislation they passed. And then with that proposal in the Governor's budget, in the second year, it would also lower the ratio across the board to one to two hundred and fifty students. There is, you can see the fiscal impact associated with that. Then there are, the next item on there is the Board of Education's SOQ recommended change that would take several positions out of the support cap. It's not a full elimination, but it gets at what some of the most critical support position, positions are, and tries to fund them at a better rate from the state. And then there are also, and also interesting, some of these positions, I think based on some of the recommendations from the prior year's School Safety Commission, school security officers and attendance officers are also tried to be removed from the support cap by several of these amendments. Priority three, student discipline. This is more of a policy area than a funding area for us, although there are a couple small little price tags associated with things. The legislation that would eliminate the charge of disorderly conduct for students has been introduced by at least three members. There is some slightly differing language among them, so we're continuing to dialogue with our advocacy partners to discuss what the best approach to that issue is. There's also a bill, a bill in the House and Senate regarding data collection of SROs and SSOs, which would help us understand better how they're being used and what is happening in our schools on a day-to-day basis so that the General Assembly can make better informed policy decisions. There's also a few other items, Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Grant Fund and Program. That would provide initially Richmond with a twenty-five thousand dollar assessment grant. There is also a bill that would eliminate the requirement that principals report misdemeanors to law enforcement. That's not a bill that our Legislative Committee has had a chance to discuss yet. We have a meeting tomorrow night in which we'll be coming up with a position for that. Moving on, priority four, English language learners, the Governor's budget. He did introduce the language to reduce the English language learner teacher ratio from one to fifty-nine to one to fifty. There is about a thirteen to fourteen million dollar price tag associated with that. There's also been legislation introduced in the House and the Senate that would change teacher ratios for ELL to be based on student language proficiency. As we were researching this, there is a little bit of confusion because those bills had slightly different language than the Governor's budget. After further investigation, it appears that the money that's in the Governor's budget to reduce the ratio to one to fifty is all that there is. The Senator Hashmi and Delegate Guzman have not introduced budget amendments to fund the proficiency-based ELL ratios, and that would be incumbent on local school boards to decide to fund those lower ratios themselves. So not, it's optional, as far as I'm aware, so not an unfunded mandate, but an unfunded option. And then priority five, school construction and modernization. I've sent you some news articles that have recently come out about this topic. The big issue that we are really pushing for this year is Senator McClellan's bill to create a School Construction and Modernization Commission. We have received good feedback to this so far. It appears to have struck a really good balance between offering support to school divisions but not requiring other school divisions specifically to do anything. There is no unfunded mandates with that bill as it's currently written. There are the other items. There's a three billion dollar bond referendum for school construction and modernization. There is the Public School Assistance Fund that is specifically targeted at school roofs. And then there are a few other items. The minority leader in the House, Delegate Gilbert, has introduced a hundred million dollar budget amendment for capital improvement grants to school divisions to assist with modernization. And then a few other items, there has been introduced two J-LARC studies, one on adjustments to the local composite index and another on the true cost of education. We are very much in support of both of those studies. Honestly, they could potentially be paired together, but really, those will start to get at the heart of allowing the General Assembly to have some informed discussion about changes to the LCI. And then finally, Delegate Carr has introduced language that would change the rate at which rich, or change the method by which payments in lieu of taxes are assessed for localities from the state. Her language gets at creating a some-sufficient fund and providing more transparency in the way that those pilot payments are calculated. So that information, that process would hopefully help improve the amount of funding that the city does get from the state in lieu of taxes. And then there is a number of other pieces of legislation that we are currently reviewing as well as monitoring. There are a ton of unfunded mandates that have been introduced. As I've discussed with, with some of you, the unfunded mandates this year, some of those are things where we may very much support the policy behind them, but they do carry a cost that the General Assembly is not proposing to fund. And so I think that those will have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis by the Legislative Committee to determine if there are any of those that the school division would want to support. There are a number of bills dealing with teacher education and development programs. I mentioned Delegate McQuinn's Preschool Minority Fellowship Program. There have been some proposed increases to the teacher residency program, as well as some other Virginia Diverse Educator Scholarship Funds and other programs out there. Estable Reform is an ongoing topic of the General Assembly. We're reviewing those bills. Lottery casinos, games of skill, there is a, at least probably thirty bills that we're currently following related to these items. Games of skill is something that was included in the Governor's budget at a ten percent tax rate. There are other proposals out there that would tax them as much as thirty-five percent. So I, it's too soon to count on exactly what type of funding we will get from the state this next year with any type of gaming or casinos. And then as the General Assembly decides what approach they would like to take with casinos in the future, we will be with other education advocates at the table to ensure that education is a primary recipient of the state revenue from those programs. Early childhood system restructuring, this is something I had mentioned to you at the last meeting. This is part of the Governor's preschool early childhood education package that would move all licensure and monitoring functions from the Department of Social Services over to the Department of Education. They are massive bills that have already been around for about a year. The General Assembly first considered them last year, so we will be continuing to monitor how those fare and what the future of early childhood education governance in the state will look like. And then the final issue that we are looking at is just gun violence prevention. There are obviously a number of gun control measures in the General Assembly this year, but we are looking specifically at what some of those gun violence prevention proposals are, what those look like, and how those can support our communities and the reduction of gun violence. I'm happy to take any other questions, but that, trying to keep it a little bit quick for you tonight.
Ms. Burke, then Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Page.
Mr. Stanley, you have done a phenomenal, I don't want to say job, because it's, I don't want to say task or assignment, but you have been on point, on target, and I appreciate it so very much. I'm thinking back to the last session you had in Churchill, East End, I should say, at Peter Paul Development Center last week. Your presentation was so well-received, so user-friendly. I'm still getting feedback. Before I came to the meeting today, I was in another meeting, and people were asking about the meeting on tomor, not the meeting, the workshop, your planning session on tomorrow. But it was great to see in the Seventh District, all the schools were represented but two. Seventh and Eighth District, I should say. So we're going to work on that part. But those that were there want to know, number one, in terms of being reminded to come out tomorrow, will there be a robo-call, or they have to go online just to be reminded, or they have to go online to be reminded?
We've been, we've been sending out social media blasts. I'm happy to send out a quick text message tomorrow to remind folks that we have that opportunity tomorrow night.
Would you be so kind?
Absolutely.
And my questions are, as you discussed that night as well, we know that Delegate McQuinn and Senator McClellan support us wholeheartedly, and it's refreshing. The equity versus the at-risk piece, would you elaborate? I'm still not completely clear on that. From what I understand, with the VDOE presented, would have been more in our favor. But with the at-risk piece, it's not favorable, but you just stated that there are possibilities of additional funding or whatever. Would you elaborate?
If I could clarify, the at-risk add-on is a current funding stream that we have. It's based on free and reduced lunch population. Richmond is one of the top earners of funding through that program. The Equity Fund that the Board of Education has proposed, it has a couple of policy changes, like allowing for school divisions to do targeted teacher compensation incentives for economically disadvantaged schools. But more importantly, it would take the at-risk add-on funding, and it would combine it with another pool of funding called Prevention Intervention and Remediation Funds, P I R for short. Those funds are currently distributed on a different formula that doesn't benefit high-poverty localities like Richmond to the same degree that the at-risk add-on does. So it would take that pool of money, combine it with the at-risk add-on money, and apply the same funding formula to all of it, so that Richmond, given our status as a fiscally-stressed locality with lots of poverty, we would end up receiving even more money, even though the pot of money is potentially the same.
My last question, Madam Chair. Can you help us by sending us something in writing as to how to communicate that with, with persons, and to whom shall we write? We know who's in our favor, but those that may not, I'm not asking you to announce them now, but at some point, let us know. We can thank those that are proposing to support us, but those that don't see it, what we can do to get them to come onboard in supporting every child in the metro area.
Absolutely, it's forthcoming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Thank you. That's what I'm talking about. Get on the ball. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate Ms. Burke's point. I'm very, very pleased with the overall presentation, and there's lots of great info about all of the, the activities that are happening, and I'm encouraged to see more discussion about school funding at the state level. I also would like to encourage the, my colleagues to appreciate the very beautiful legislative tracker that Mr. Stanley has developed, and he shared that with the Board on January seventeenth. I'm still in the process of reviewing it myself and adding feedback, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. Whether you are on the Legislative Committee or not, the feedback would be, would be valued and appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Um, Mr. Stanley, thank you. Thank you. This is really, this is on point. I just want to, I just want you to restate the location of the advocacy training for tomorrow, and yes, I concur with my colleague as far as sending out reminders, because this is so critical.
Yes.
And we want everyone to be engaged in this process. So the location tomorrow is where?
Blackwell Elementary School, six p.m. to seven thirty p.m. Dinner will be served. Poster materials will be provided.
Thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
I also wanted to thank Mr. Stanley for all the great work that he's put in, not only to helping to organize our approach and liaising with, with our legislators, but also for the advocacy efforts. I had the opportunity to, to attend the training on the eleventh. It was fantastic. It was one of those meetings that makes you remember why you want to be a school board member, and it was great, in particular, to hear from our student representatives, including Cory, who Mayor Stony said is going to be a future mayor. Cory was coy about whether he may be announcing a run this year. But it was just a great event. I encourage people to, to attend tomorrow's training. It's a, it's a really neat opportunity to hear about the efforts that we're taking and how you can get more involved.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Ms. Ellen.
Okay. We're going to now, nine point oh two, receive an update on the Virginia Department of Education Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening again. We just had our joint meeting with the VDOE, so not too much more to share. We do have our next cap meeting tentatively scheduled for February thirteenth, so we are looking forward to that. I am now meeting bi-weekly with our liaison at the state to continue our communication and our work together, and so we'll have more updates after the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Camaras. And now nine point oh three, receive for a first read, proposed revisions to policy one dash six point three, quorum and rules of order.
Madam Chair is looking at me, so I think that means he wants me to speak on this. This was a request from the Board, from Board Leadership. I believe you all spoke about this at your, at your governance training.
Yes.
And this is just simply to remove the observation of Robert's Rules of Order, specifically in the policy, to relying upon the standard parliamentary procedures, unless otherwise provided by the bylaws or by statute. And so this is the first reading. I acknowledge, I heard you, Ms. Gibson, I'll have to research what the, what the, not the Board of Education, what V S B A indicated about first read and second read, but this has been our policy of how we do it, and so I'm sure there are other methods, but I don't want it out there that it's, that we're following a wrong method. It is your policy. So we can explore other policies on how we receive and approve policies, but for now, there is a first read that's been received, which is what's before you tonight, and if there are no other changes in the interim, this will be presented again for the second read and vote on your February's third meeting.
Discussion? Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so just to reiterate the rationale for making the change in terms of moving from Robert's Rules to the parliamentary, is that essentially that's what we've been doing, and so, you know, wanting to ensure that the policy aligns with the way that the Board has been operating. And in terms of our approach to adopting policy, it was my understanding that it's not that the policy language is incorrect, but just the way that we are approaching it, so there would still be the same number of reads. But the V S B A representative from Harrisonburg, you know, was like, what? You don't move to adopt it each time? So, so I just want to make sure that we are following, you know, whatever the standard approach is.
Right, but in, in your explanation of, and that's why I need to do some more research, it would, it does, it's not logical to me to adopt a draft. But again, I have to do some research on what other divisions do. It, it just doesn't make sense to me when changes could be made, and your adoption is a final act versus some other, so we'll figure it out, and we'll bring it back before you, if necessary.
Ms. Page?
Um, this question is to Attorney Lilly. So our poll- So, our policies are based on, our parliamentary procedures are based on Robert's Rules of Order? Or do I have it flipped? For clarity?
Robert's Rules of Order is a specific type of parliamentary. And I'm gonna rely actually on our parliamentarian to help me out as well. So, Robert's Rules of Order is an established type of parliamentary procedure. That is not the only parliamentary procedure that is out there that can be followed. And in fact, you know, a lot of bodies may be moving or are moving toward a more simplified version, because Robert's Rules of Order is very dense and complicated. And certainly, although it was designed to, I guess, make meetings more orderly, sometimes the bureaucracy of each and every step becomes cumbersome. So, certainly, there are other more streamlined versions of parliamentary procedure out there that bodies can follow. And so, certainly, as we are changing the policy from that, you all as a body do need to, I guess, agree on what that is going to be, rather than Robert's Rules. It doesn't necessarily have to be specifically spelled out in the policy as it's written, because it's broad enough to cover it. But you do need to have some type of guideline, you know, so that you all know what the, what you're following.
So, would we have not been out of compliance?
I would say that you do not, I would say that you don't follow Robert's Rules of Order to the letter of it, to the extent that I don't know that, you know, with, let me say this. The actions that you all take normally are very basic, as far as you move, you know, you're moving, you're making, somebody, someone is making a motion, someone is seconding that motion, there is discussion, and then there is a vote. And so, that's the very basics of it. However, there are a lot more functions, if you will, of, or iterations of Robert's Rules of Order that you all don't follow. Not necessarily, some because it just doesn't come up. But there's tabling of motions, there, you know, those are all kinds of things that you all don't normally use. So, I'm not gonna say you're not in compliance, because there are some instances where it's not necessary. But you all as members of the body don't necessarily, have not necessarily adhered to it, to the letter of how it can be used to the fullest, if that makes sense.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Moore Street.
Yes, we're ready?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did just send to the entire Board a communication that we received a little bit earlier this evening from the City Attorney's Office, weighing in on both our vacant property committee, along with its intended work, and the Moore Street MOU. I will summarize by saying it is the City Attorney's perspective that the work before the vacant property committee is not appropriate, that's my word, for the school board or the administration. And that the Moore Street MOU is likewise not something that the school board can enter into. So, there's more information there. Again, we just received this this evening, so I'm passing that on to you. Glad to answer any questions that I can at this time, but we're still trying to understand all of that. So, I wanted to give that context before we started this discussion this evening.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, I mean, as it pertains to the MOU, I believe that's what we discussed at the last meeting, too, that this doesn't really fall within. So, it seems that the Board can determine to, you know, to release the property to the city, and then, and then really has no authority over what is actually done with the building as that currently stands. And so, so I do think, though, that, you know, given the proximity of the building to this existing school building, both here at Carver, and then I know this is also applicable in the case of the 13 Acres Building that's adjacent to Holton, I do think that there are circumstances in which we would want to perhaps revisit that scenario, because I do believe that the school board and the district should have a bit more say in terms of how the arrangement is currently structured. And so, I would suggest that as a next step, that we consider drafting a letter, or that there is some discussion about how we could, you know, change the way that this system is set up right now. Because I think it, there's room for improvement to ensure that if we wanted to take that step, that we would have a bit more authority over how things move forward. So, that would be my recommendation, that perhaps is not specific to the Moore Street Building, but looking more holistically, because I think it would be somewhat short-sighted for us to release this building without having any say in what happens.
Mr. Young?
I would just caution, I would just caution us to not be guilty of some of the same mistakes that rich public schools in the past made relative to infrastructure, schools that were part of, part of a bill of goods that were sold to the city taxpayers. And I think we can all cite a number of examples. So, I welcome the opportunity to push back on Council's proposition.
I will just say that when you have a chance to read this, he's relying on state code. So, it's not something Council can change, it's not something we can change. I think we can certainly enter into discussions. But I think from the tone here, they're a little taken aback by the fact that they didn't know any of this was going on. So, my suggestion is, and I don't think we need a motion, we don't, we don't need to talk about this tonight. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cameron.
Just to clarify one thing, Councilmember Gray has been involved in all of the Moore Street discussions. In fact, those discussions were happening before the school board or the administration knew about it. So, whether or not that was then transferred from her to other members of Council or the City Attorney is a question I can't answer. But certainly, there were members of Council that were involved. That being said, certainly, this is gonna require us to take a second, to step back and figure out next steps. So, my recommendation would be at our VPC meeting and with our Council to discuss and figure out what the right next step forward is broadly about this. I think on the Moore Street issue, it appears that we are at something of a holding place. And so, I think really the question before the Board is whether they want to exercise the quitclaim and fully dispose of the property, knowing that we have been given now in writing, though not signed, a clear articulation of what is going to potentially occur with that property. I'm not sure that we have a clear pathway to binding any parties to our desires at this time under the current legal structure. And so, what I would be concerned about is if we leave tonight without any guidance around how to move forward or not on that particular case.
Mr. Young?
No, thank you. Perhaps I chose the wrong word. I was referring to C-O-U-N-S-E-L, not C-O-U-N-C-I-L, when I referred to pushing back on Council, not, so, in other words, legal counsel, the city legal counsel, not Mr. Genell. And so, that's the first, so the first point. This is, I understand his interpretation of the statute, and I think it's subject to discussion. That's the first point. The second point, I agree with Superintendent, that we do have a party, or parties, plural, that have conveyed interest in the property. And at the risk of speaking for my colleagues on VPC, I think that to the Superintendent's point, I would propose that at that meeting, and I've solicited of everyone at time on the 29th. So, a week from tomorrow, I think would be germane to just have that discussion.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate this update, and I look forward to further discussion about how we handle these issues moving forward. I do think it's important for us to review these documents or this analysis very critically. Fortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to dig into it too much. But I'm also sensitive to the idea that we have fairly significant vacant property or property that could be significant. We've got certain property that could be very valuable to potential development in this city. And I want to make sure that, that we are doing what we can to make sure that there's a benefit to the school system in the event property is disposed in the future. You know, when you think about, I know there's probably plenty of discussion to be had about certain facilities, but there's definitely a notable one sitting on Boulevard. There's a ton of development going on on Boulevard, right? So, I'd be a little careful, based on one email from the City Attorney, to say, okay, we've got nothing to do with it. I do think that there's legal authority. There's also our role as policymakers and politicians, to be frank. And I do think it's our responsibility in this capacity to do what we think is best for the school system. So, if that involves political leverage, that's something that I think we need to be very thoughtful about moving forward. Because if we accept that we have no ability to be involved in the discussion about what happens to a property after the fact, then does that mean that we are not going to see any benefit if certain valuable property is disposed of or used by the city? So, let's think about that very critically before we just accept one interpretation or another. And let's make sure that we're very firm in a stance that is most beneficial to the school system. With respect to the, to the MOU, I do see, I do see, in particular, how some more discussion should probably be had about that as well. Our ability to, in my opinion, and our ability to bind the city, to bind VCU, to bind the school system through this MOU document is likely somewhat limited. But, but I do think that outlining certain expectations is important. I do think that for a building that is attached to Carver Elementary, there's a lot of value to this school system, to having some partner in there who's going to provide a benefit to our students, and who is not going to disrupt the school day or the learning environment of our students, and to ensure that they're, that anyone that is entering that building is, is someone who would, we would otherwise welcome into our buildings, because they're so closely tied together. So, this isn't, this isn't a random building sitting off somewhere. This is attached to Carver Elementary, right? So, so I want to make sure that whatever we do, there's a benefit for those students at Carver and for the Carver community. I'm also, I think, I think further discussion will be had by Board members and Council members and the Mayor's Office and members of the administration. It seems to me, I'd be curious, a little more curious, or I'm very curious to know how some of this discussion's been evolving on the city side in particular. So, that's generally what I have to say about that. I, it appears to me that based on this update, and based on the feedback that we received, it's probably not appropriate for us to vote on an MOU tonight. But that doesn't mean that the conversation ends here. And I think we need to come up with approach, with some approach that ensures that we have a great solution for students at that school, that this potential project is not just thrown to the wayside, because there's questions about this mechanism for implementing it. Because I think that would be unfortunate, because I think there's a lot of potential there.
Ms. Gibson, and then Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yes, and I think particularly the notion that the VCT shouldn't exist is, doesn't, doesn't make sense. As it pertains to the MOU, as it's been developed, I do want to flag, the main thing that stands out for me is that this would, the city would sell Moore Street for the amount of $1 for the development of the expanded CDC program. And so, so that we're selling this, you know, this property for a dollar, particularly when we know that there are other entities that are interested in the facility, that's particularly concerning. And to be frank, I am not certain that selling the building is really in the best interests of the district or our students. And so, I would suggest that some type of rental, you know, would make more sense for the district, especially given the fact that the building is touching. And so, and so, those are critical issues that I think would require substantially more discussion, regardless of whether it's the city or the school system. I mean, I think that these are big issues that the district, I think, should take a stance on. And those are my concerns.
Ms. Page, then Ms. Burke, and Mr. Young?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I completely concur with my colleague, Ms. Barlow. We have made major mistakes in the past involving disposing of properties and the school system. Our children have not fully reaped the benefits. You know, we have surplus, quitclaim, and then we reopen the building. And then, we expend monies on buildings. You know, it's not, haven't been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So, again, I think going forward, there needs to be discussions on how really, you know, the school system truly reaps the benefits from disposing of buildings, quitclaim deeds, and the sale of the property. And the school system supposed to, you know, receive the proceeds from the sale of the building. And I'm not talking about a dollar. Because we have disposed of buildings that have been worth far more than a dollar. So, that's my recommendation for the administration. We need to take a strong stance regarding this.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Burke, and then Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Barlow wholeheartedly regarding the partnership with Virginia Commonwealth University. But my concern is that, number one, we don't want to, I don't want to lose this opportunity, because it would benefit because it would benefit our students in that area, particularly because of the preschool education piece. And then to have a university run a, I shouldn't say run, facilitate, that's also an opportunity for people who are majoring in education to be a future teachers, maybe within Richmond Public Schools because of their partnership with Carver Elementary and the Carver community. So it's an opportunity to enhance that. But my concern is the time, whether it's regarding the VCU piece, time-wise, because a few months have passed and, you know, they have money to go other places and do other things. So, I, however it's decided whether it's surplus, in the end, the city has the final say. We can recommend all we want to recommend, then some, but the city, because technically the city, that's, they're our landlord. We don't own the property, the city does. But I'd like to be at the table to make that recommendation. But I don't want us to wait so long, however the discussions and the revising the MOUs and going back to see who says this and that, they could turn around and say, "We have to move on." So whatever we do, however it's done, whether it's through our community on vacant sites, that we don't take too long, much longer, either to find out from VCU what their timeline is. But just visualizing, knowing that building, old building that's been attached to the school, big classrooms, tall ceilings, but it's in need of lots of care. So if they were to rent it, it would have to be completely renovated. If they were to buy it, I can't figure out how you're going to buy a building that's attached, not listed separate. That's not for me to figure out, that would be up to the architects. But I just hope timeline-wise that we don't miss out on the opportunity. That's what my major concern is. And our children in Carver, our children in the East End, we need more preschool programs that families can walk to and have that university to be a part of their educational process in partnership with Richmond Public Schools. Timeline, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young and then Mr. Barlow?
Yeah, just real briefly, because I think I concur with just about everything that's been said around the table. But to Dawn's point, she didn't say it this way, I'll just be real candid about it. I don't want us to surplus another building that is sold for the purpose of a Redskins training facility. Let's be real blunt. And then, two, I'm confident that we have enough property that we could we could sell with collaboration with the city to earn the kind of capital to build another elementary school. So that's, for me, that is, that's my context, is the opportunity to erect a new a new elementary school for our kids. So, well said, everybody's weighed in on this, I agree.
Mr. Barlow and then Ms. Dorr?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think there's a certain you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to point any fingers at people currently on council or people in the mayor's office or people on the school board or the administration now. But when you think about the fact that a lot of these properties were built in order to provide a quality education for our students and that the funding hasn't been there for us to keep up a lot of these properties, there's a certain irony in that if there's a perceived value of that property now, because it's fallen into such disrepair, that the schools shouldn't get some financial benefit from it as well. So, I do want to continue to encourage us moving forward to think about that. And then the other thing, I do want to talk a little bit about the Moore Street property in particular because it is a historic site. It's a very important site in the educational history of Richmond, as far as I'm concerned. It is attached to Carver Elementary. It is something that could be a great asset for our school system. Right now, I'm concerned that it's serving as a liability. It's attached to one of our buildings. It's vacant. It needs additional, it needs, in my opinion, it probably needs to be secured more effectively in some respects. And, you know, when I look at the facilities plans for the school system, when I think about all of the needs that we have, it's hard to imagine coming up with the kind of funds that we would need to fully renovate the Moore Street School when we have such needs south of the river, when we have such needs, when we want to build a new high school, when we want to build other new schools, when we want to renovate facilities that our students are currently in. So, I do want us to think critically about what the value to us may be if we if we move forward with the deal. I have a hard time imagining that the city would sell it to a condo developer, given that it's attached to an elementary school. But, you know, but I do want to make sure that we have some continued discussion about what that building in particular can become for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr?
I don't want to belabor the point, but I agree largely with what everyone has said. I think, I do think that vacant property, it's important to note that the vacant property commission is also looking at uns- not-surplused properties, so like the Altria donated buildings, which we have not surplus to the city. So, to me, I think that that is absolutely in our purview. And in regards to the surplus buildings, I think it's frankly ridiculous that we have so many buildings that we've surplus to the city and they haven't done anything with. And absolutely, we should be putting pressure on them and working with them to figure out what to do with them. So, you know, I'm confident that we can get there with city council. And if they want to be a part of that conversation, please join us, let's do it.
Thank you, colleagues. I think this was a surprise to all of us, but I think we cannot approve a memorandum of understanding given this opinion. And so, I would suggest that we task our superintendent and in working with the committee, hopefully, if you can get a meeting together soon. The city attorney has offered to meet with us and elaborate on what he has said in this document. And one of the things he references is that we should, according to state code, there should be a collaborative decision, but it's kind of vague on how that works. So, I think that we need to push forward to to say to the city attorney, to the mayor's office, to city council, "Okay, let's collaborate quickly." Because we do have a lot of properties. And again, this committee is tasked with more than vacant properties. It's all non-instructional properties. That's a lot, we have a lot. Some of them are not being used for anything, others are being used for other things. So, let, we have a committee, we have our superintendent, and I think we do need to get together with this gentleman. As he has said, I will say this to everybody here who doesn't get to see this. Haskell Brown says, "I am happy to discuss the issues raised by your questions in more detail at a later time." So, I think that's our next step. Is this, I'm sorry? Ms. Lilly? Okay.
I was just going to say, I don't want the board to appear not to understand the process and role of the board in this. And I certainly don't want you all to go through a whole lot of extra steps that are not necessary. Because if you understand what your role and your authority is, you know that, as we spoke, as Ms. Gibson mentioned, we spoke the last time, the basic, as I said, the basic process is this, if you don't want a piece of property, if you no longer need it, you surplus it to the city. The city has also required a quitclaim deed, you do a quitclaim deed to the city. Whatever the city does with that property, I want you to separate your right and the ability to have that conversation with the city, right? So, you don't have the right to have that conversation with the city. You may have the ability and that becomes a political piece of it that I want to make sure the board understands. That is a different realm that we're talking about. So I don't want you as a board to appear, because we've had this, well, we've mentioned the process several times before and several iterations of it before in the VPC as well. The city is going to be critical in whatever conversation you have about whatever properties you want, not, whatever you want to do with these properties, the city's going to be a critical point, which we also mentioned at the VPC committee, having someone from the city's real estate office to be part of those conversations as well. So I don't want you to be in a position to appear not to know what the process is because the process is very clear. But I want you, when you're speaking to people about selling properties, you can't sell them. That's where, that's where the information, and I haven't read the entire email forward that was just forwarded, but when you're speaking about it, I think that's where some miscommunication and misunderstanding comes into play, where the city is receiving what's being said about what you think you can do with the property in a different way than you really do have the ability to do. So, I just want to make it clear that this isn't a foreign concept. It's fairly simple and to encourage that you don't make more of it than it really need be. With the Moore Street deal, the timing is going to be up to the city, period, Ms. Burke. You mentioned about timing, that's nothing that you can't control at this point, other than to put it in front of them. So I want us to be realistic as to what we can and can't do in this process.
Mr. Kamras and then Ms. Page?
I'm just seeking guidance from the board as to what to do next, specifically with respect to the Moore Street property. We are receiving a great deal of encouragement to move swiftly, to have the board exercise the quitclaim deed, so the next steps of whatever deal can be struck. Knowing where the city attorney sits in terms of his perspective on this, I'm more than happy to meet with the city attorney and discuss it further. I'm very doubtful that his perspective will change. I think it's, appears shared by Ms. Lilly, and she's shared that with me for some time now. So, we can continue to talk and get some verbal assurances, handshakes about what would happen in some potential deal going forward. But I don't know what else there is to do. So, really what this comes down to is either this board wants to engage in a legal back and forth with the city about what its rights are or are not. That seems to be path one. Path two is, you could do the quitclaim deed and then we just really focus on making something come out of it. The administration is feeling caught in the middle of a number of different political entities and I don't feel like I have clear guidance from this board about how to proceed, given the city's clear perspective on what this body can and cannot do.
Mr. Barlow, I'm sorry, Ms. Page, then Mr. Barlow, then apparently Mr. Young, Ms. Burke?
Thank you. I'm very clear on our role in regarding to, regarding our buildings, because we don't own the buildings. But I guess the point is, I don't want to make those same mistakes. And so I, I guess I would say the quitclaim deed and be in conversation, because we need to have, you know, be clear, you know, move forward. The quitclaim deed, but also have some, what does it look like? I mean, because we, right, I mean, I get it. We don't have any say-so as far as, you know, quitclaim deed, the city sells the building, but we sure don't want to sell it for a dollar. I guess that's my point.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just a few quick things. Thank you, Ms. Lilly, for reinforcing the distinction between our political abilities versus our legal rights with respect to these properties. I think it's a very helpful context for us to all keep in mind. The second thing is, I would respectfully request from my colleagues the ability to join the committee. So I'm curious to know if there are any strong objections there or if that can be accommodated. I'll add my name to the list and look forward to joining you guys at future meetings. And then, the last piece is, I, I do understand that the superintendent and his office has been in a challenging spot with respect to figuring some of this stuff out, as has Ms. Lilly. And at times, believe it or not, I felt that way too. So, I'd like, I do think that it would be valuable for the board at a, at the next meeting, if possible, to be prepared to vote on a quitclaim deed. But I do think some further discussions are necessary before we do so.
Okay, then Mr. Young and then Ms. Burke?
Sure. Welcome to the committee, Mr. Barlow. And you should be a part of that, that's well thought out. What Mrs. Lilly addressed regarding the time piece, VCU has a timeline. I know the city, I wasn't referring to city council or whatever else, but VCU has a timeline. So, that's what my thought was in regards to, I know we don't have control over it, but they may leave next week and say, you know, we have to move on to something else. So I just don't want that to happen. So I'm delighted that the committee will be meeting at the end of the month and we can go back to VCU and state, "We're going to make a decision as to what we're going to do." Then it'll be up to the city or whatever at the February meeting. But, because it's a little pressure on there from VCU as well in terms of, you know, Richmond Public Schools, what are you all going to do? We've been waiting for you, not realizing all the other things we have to do. We have 20 number ones on our list of things to do. So, that's what the concern was. I know we have no control over it. So, thank you. But just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Young?
All right, just to address the superintendent's request for information, and I think Cheryl said it well, the vacant property committee will convene January 29th, all persons are welcome, 6:00 PM. And I've proposed that we would convene at Carver to accommodate a discussion for visit of Moore. So, 29th at 6:00 PM. And we would welcome council, i.e. COU and SEL from the city to participate. But I'll get with the superintendent about that agenda setting.
Okay. All right. If there is no further discussion, we will move on to administrative business. First, receive a rezoning implementation update.
Good evening again. Dr. Harris is ill this evening, so she was not able to be present to share some information here. I will say that the engagement team has been working on a toolkit for principals to be able to hold individual school-based rezoning meetings with each of their communities. We have developed an FAQ document, which we are circulating to try to answer some of the key questions. That is constantly being updated. And we are planning for regional sort of rezoning update meetings for each section of the city to be able to answer questions and continue to provide information. The next big pieces beyond communication are really related to transportation. You heard Mr. Simmons speak about that. But the second one is staffing. So, for some of our new zones, there will be significant staffing changes. The middle schools on the south side come to bind most significantly. So we're working through what that might look like, what the, we want to check all the relevant policies and so on and so forth so that we can begin to take steps to provide the information.
to provide the information and support needed for our teachers and other staff at our schools. So that's, uh, the next big piece that we are working on.
Thank you. All right. Receive for our first read, the high school program of study. Dr. Epp.
Good evening again. Um, I'm very excited to present to you, um, for first read, our 2021 program of studies for high school courses. Um, the, I just wanted to, similar to, um, our program of studies adopted last year, um, this includes comprehensive list of the courses available at our high school with correct, um, course codes and credit assignments. Uh, we are adding a small number of courses that will, um, be up for local adoption. Uh, two courses are state-approved courses, but we're, our new, um, new, uh, new offerings for RPS, which are AP Spanish Literature and Culture and Health and PE for grade nine that can be taken online. Those are state-approved courses that are just added to our offerings. And then the next three are locally developed courses, which we're very excited about. Um, one is to add back in a public speaking course, which would serve as a local elective. Um, a policy pathways course, which is being, um, developed in partnership with PolicyPathways.org, um, whose goal is to encourage more young, um, young leaders of color to pursue careers in policy and in advocacy. And Real Richmond, the, uh, Richmond History Course for, uh, our high school students, um, per our dreams for RPS. And those three courses will be, um, available for local elective credit. Um, so we are presenting our, uh, program of studies for first read. There is a section on our website under the counseling section where the public can submit feedback or questions or suggestions for our program of studies. And, um, we look forward to adopting, uh, getting formal approval on this at our next board meeting and then, uh, later in February, bringing this board, the middle school program of studies. Are there any questions?
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and, and thank you also for the update regarding the middle school program of studies guide. Um, I think it, it's important to look at them together. Um, so that would be, um, that would be my question. And then also for, um, I think similarly, when we're adopting policy, uh, it's kind of highlighted in the document itself, anything that's been changed or it's like in red. Um, and so, um, if I'm following the main changes or simply adding the new courses, um, but if, if there's a way in the document, when we re- review it next time, if you could, um, highlight, uh, any, any of the, the language that's been revised, just so from a clarity standpoint. I wasn't able to see it if, if it was there.
Um, well, this is not a policy document per se, but, um, we could do that. That would take a substantial amount of time because that's just not the way we compiled the document. So we, we can do that, but that will take probably six to eight hours to go back and recompile, if that is, if that is important to the board.
Um, can I get a feel from the board about whether we need to have that done? Could you just sort of look at me and shake your head or nod your head? Do we need to have that done?
I mean, I just, I don't know how we can adopt changes if we don't know what the changes are and for us to kind of go through and try to compare two documents that are, you know, I mean, I, I just think it's important to be able to see what the changes are.
I don't think we're asking for adoption of changes to the program of studies. We're asking for the 2021 program of studies, which reflects, um, the same courses from last year plus these additional courses. I can certainly look into it. Um, I just had not, uh, understood this to be the same process for policy development.
Mr. Barlow, Ms. Page, I saw Ms. Page. Ms. Page?
Oh, ma'am, but I'm, I'm, no.
I saw the, I saw you indicate. And I see Dr. Spie.
I'm not trying to get into the weeds.
And I, Ms. Dorr, Ms. Burke, okay. Mr. Barlow. Mr. Young.
Can I, can I ask this, a clarifying question? Um, other than the new courses, the only other changes would be in essence, um, just cosmetic. Cosmetic, language.
Correct.
Like editing for grammar or it's, there's, there's nothing that's, hmm, there's nothing other than what you have just presented is, in terms of substance.
Correct.
Changing in the program set. It's the same courses, everything is the same, we're just adding these five new ones.
Correct.
There's no policies in there that are being changed, no?
Correct. I want to flag, uh, that is correct. Um, there is one section that, um, when we come back for a second read, may be a slight adjustment, which is the title of a course based on, um, our exceptional education reading courses. Um, and those would be a title change, not a substantive change.
So could we bring back that change? And if there's anything else of substance that changes, but otherwise, we're, we're quite literally just talking about, um, copy editing, correct?
Sure. And I can bring, I have copy edits compiled by eight different departments and directors, as well as my own copy edits. We just, our process was we developed those all separately and then compiled, um, into one final edited document. So I can certainly remember for the future, if folks want to see year-over-year changes, but, um, we, I had eight direct, different directors go through and, um, edit different sections, um, per the process we outlined. I'm happy to share my, my line edits in the addendum as well as, I, I had, I had line edited the whole thing, but you'll see that they're stylistic. So I, I'm happy to share that.
I think we can go with that, Dr. Epp, from what I'm seeing.
Um, and again, if, if the public has any comments or feedback, you can email me directly or on our website, under the counseling section, there is a form for folks to submit questions or feedback for the program of studies. Thank you. I think I'm also the next item.
Yes. The alternative paths.
So this is the first read of a new policy, um, that addresses, uh, courses that are taking, taken in fewer than 140 clock hours for high school credit. State code allows school divisions to, um, offer standard credit, um, with, for, um, for study with less than 140 clock hours under certain conditions, if the school board has, if the local school board has adopted a local policy. Um, this is a policy that we have, we do not currently have on the books, and it is one that we feel we need. And specifically, um, we are, we've developed a policy that in effect allows, um, students to take courses in grades eight through 12 for high school course credit, um, and still be eligible for that credit as long as those courses are online and mastery-based in nature. They are provided by a state-approved vendor. They are included in our annual program of studies, and for the which, for the year in which they are taken, and they are officially scheduled as part of the student's academic schedule. In a nutshell, this allow, this would allow students to take virtual courses, um, and upon successful completion, as long as they demonstrated mastery of the course and mastery of the standards through a passing grade, regardless of the number of hours they spent on that course, they would still be eligible for, um, credit. The reason we're bringing this policy now, as you, as you may remember, um, our students who are in, um, who take courses at the Richmond Technical Center have a transition block at their school based on the transportation time. Um, and, um, uh, students currently are not able to take an eighth course during that time, but this would allow students to, um, take a virtual course both within that time period, but maybe time, um, it allows for a variable, uh, in terms of students' own ability, a self-paced curricula, um, which we do have a track record for with our specialized PLC program, um, for students who are undercredited, overaged. Um, so this policy would allow us to expand that opportunity to, um, all courses that meet these conditions.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I, I have concerns on, uh, the policy. You know, I'm, I'm reminded about when we were talking about changing, uh, the start times for high school. And, um, and you know, when we talked about that, um, you know, I remember saying, you know, hearing that, you know, this was an equity issue and that, you know, we needed to make sure that we got the 140 hours. Um, and my concern was, yeah, but I also think the equity issue is that our kids don't necessarily have to wake up at the crack of dawn in the morning when they get to sleep in, in the, in the counties. Um, and so I just, you know, I, I, I struggle with the, um, with the, the rationale that, uh, we are going to be flexible with students who are, you know, uh, taking learning content in from a piece of software, um, but, but the flexibility is not there for students that are being taught by, by teachers. And I, and I, um, I, I, I think that ultimately, I feel very strongly that, um, there's no, there is no true, um, uh, trade-off here, you know, that we cannot replace the value of being taught by, uh, qualified teachers. And so to, um, to then, uh, you know, further, you know, exacerbate the inequity between, you know, being taught by, uh, software versus being taught by a teacher and, and reducing the amount of, of, uh, time that is required, to me, um, is, is just really a step in the wrong direction.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Dr. Epp?
Thank you.
10.04, receive a stormwater presentation.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Um, yes?
Uh, is there, so the, um, stormwater presentation does have significant budgetary impact, and I'm also sensitive to the fact that we still have closed session information this evening. Is there any way that this could be added to our Thursday conversation?
Um, it does seem to be mostly about money, doesn't it?
I think we're, some of us may be losing our pep.
Um, Mr. Simmons, would that work for you? Since it is mostly about money, budget?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you want to debate again?
No, Thursday.
Thursday, that's my, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
That's my, that's my, oh, okay.
Yeah. All right. JCT update?
Okay. Um, can I get the next slide, please? So this first slide just goes into where we are with the transition planning. Uh, the three principals have received the floor plans and are now making tentative room assignments, uh, for their teachers. Uh, we have scoped out all of the key milestones and deliverables for, uh, uh, move plans over the summer, and over the next few weeks, we'll be engaging with those principals to, uh, customize those move plans with each of them. Uh, principals have completed the furniture selections for FFNE. Um, got a lot of great feedback there. Uh, so right now, we're just waiting on final, uh, quotes back from the vendor, and we'll be able to update, uh, the budget with those actuals next month. Um, and then finally, we've provided the construction firms with our spring SOL testing, uh, windows. Uh, they've agreed to work around those windows so as not to create too much noise while students are testing. Turning first to the George Mason project update, uh, the project remains on schedule and on budget. Um, it's really cool to see the windows and the glass starting to go in, in some of the areas, making great progress there on mechanical engineering and plumbing work. Brickwork is estimated to be at about 75% completion, and they've started to move things around on the site in order to work on the, the stormwater mitigation system, which is, uh, the corrugated piping, which will be installed underneath the parking lot. In terms of the demolition update, uh, we've proposed to commemorate the 1922 section of the building by creating an archway, which will lead to the, uh, the playfields, um, using original bricks from the 1922 section of the building. Uh, it sounds like, uh, Ms. Burke and Councilwoman Newbill met about this, and there is, uh, you know, strong agreement that this is a, a good path forward. Um, and Council President Newbill plans to sponsor an ordinance to this effect and bring it to council. Um, green is, is coming along. It's really impressive here, um, on, on schedule, on budget. Um, 80% of the hydronic piping has been installed in the building. This was one of the areas that contractors were really worried about initially because there's literally miles of hydronic piping within the building, um, and are 80% through, so they're well ahead of schedule on, on that piece. Um, they were scheduled to complete the deck out, uh, by early next week. As of today, um, it's going to be done tomorrow, so it's about 95% done today, uh, should be done by tomorrow, which is exciting. And all the large systems, including the boilers, the chillers, uh, those sorts of things are already on site, are in the contractor's hands, so there will be no delay in getting those, those roughed in and added. Uh, middle school on the whole, this was always the biggest project with the most pressure, but it remains, um, on track and, and on budget. Uh, doing a lot of brickwork on the back section of the, the building, which you really can't see right now. But in this building, as with all the other buildings, there's a lot of great progress being made inside. If you're able to tour the building to see a lot of duck work, a lot of roughens, um, a lot of interior finishes are start, starting to go in. Um, so the contractors are, you know, still continuing to push. We were in a construction meeting with the contractor earlier last week, talking about just the schedule and how things are looking. He actually has a phone app, uh, that counts down to the, to the second when this needs to be done, so they're tracking this very, very carefully, and, uh, we feel pretty good about where we are right now. One thing that needs to happen great, really quickly is, um, to start to shift some of the different pieces of equipment on the site around so that we can do here what we're doing at George Mason and start to work on the stormwater mitigation system. And that should be happening this weekend, next week. And then just to get further into the weeds, there's some, um, an update for each of the different sections and where we are with the work, uh, in those sections. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Mr. Young?
Just briefly, uh, I presume that we're anticipating that Carr would re, would reject the archway, but, uh, as Newbill's proposed ordinance would be in lieu of Carr. Uh, and I presume that we're anticipating, because largely this, I don't want to mischaracterize, but largely this is what was previously submitted. Uh, no.
No, this is a, this is a change. And since Carr has made a decision, it is now formally with council. So, uh, I, yes, the next step is with, with Dr. Newbill to take that step, yes.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Simmons? Do we have a consent agenda? Do we have other informational items? Anyone have announcements of their committee reports or? Ms. Dorr?
Uh, I have a question for the board. Our finance committee meeting is next Tuesday, the 28th, which is also the date of the mayor's state of the city. Um, and it's also, given our number of board, uh, meetings regarding the budget, I wanted to see if the board would okay, be okay with us, um, suspending our finance committee meetings until after the budget is approved or?
Is there any objection? All right. Are there any other informational items, reports? Mr. Barlow?
Uh, sorry, is this 13?
Well, I was back up at 12, but it all, all works.
You're 12? Okay, I can wait for 14.
Okay. Anything else? How about reports attending committee meetings and conferences? Ms. Burke?
I just have a question. Um, tomorrow, the 22nd, I'm thinking about the advocacy piece. Are we still having the spelling bee tomorrow as well? Spelling bee is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Okey-dokey. All right.
All right. Any other new business? Announcements? Announcements? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got very exciting news with respect to Carver Elementary from Thursday night. It's kind of unbelievable. But Thursday, Embrace Carver, which is the 501(c)(3) that we all approved for Carver Elementary to provide additional support for the school, and the Monument Avenue Preservation Society held a fundraiser on Monument Avenue. And the fundraiser was split up amongst four houses, and they pitted the owners and the attendees at each of these houses against one another and checked in to see who was raising the most money for the school. And it was incredible to see so much support for the school. We had the principal there, we had teachers, members of the community, incredible hosts. And I swear I nearly fainted when the, one of the lead hosts brought out a giant check to celebrate that $107,395 were raised for Carver Elementary. It was, it's incredible. I think we're still in awe about it. But I wanted to note that for you all and also to encourage the opportunity to perhaps recognize some of the leaders of this effort at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. That is quite amazing. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Let's go into our closed session. I'm sorry, I could not hear you. I thought I had it on a different day than tomorrow. Thank you, Ms. Yadesco. Okay.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, amended, I moved that the school board of the state briefing convene in closed session to discuss performance and licensure status in Employee Matter 1920-05.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
We are moving to someplace down the hall.